All right.
Good morning. Nice to see all of you. Welcome to the April 4th, 2023, Meeting of the Trinity County Board of Supervisors. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Supervisor Gogan. If you would stand.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
All right. Reporting out of our March 21st, 2023 closed session. Item 6.1, Government Code Section 549, 54.5E, Public Employee Evaluation, County Council. Evaluation process continued. No reportable action was taken. Item 6.2, Government Code Section 549, 54.5C, Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation Number of Cases, One. Ho-Groff at L versus Trinity County at L, Trinity County Superior Court Case Number 20, CV058. Direction was given to staff. And item 6.3, Government Code Section 549.4, I'm sorry, 54954.5F, Conference with Labor Negotiators. Counties designated representatives are Margaret Long and Susie Hawkins. Employee organizations, all bargaining units, direction was given to staff. All right, presentations. Board of Supervisors. Item 1.1, receive a presentation from Golden State Finance Authority, who in coordination with Rural County Representatives of California, RCRC, is offering the Assist to Own Program for county employees who are looking to purchase a home. So I became aware of this opportunity through RCRC and I have invited Carolyn Sensary. She is the Director of Marketing for the Golden State Finance Authority. And just felt it was important to make our county employees aware of an opportunity that is available to them for toward the purchase of a home. So Carolyn, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
So in order to talk about this program that is available to employees of County of Trinity, I'd like to share my screen and share a PowerPoint presentation with you briefly.
Okay, I see your screen. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So welcome this morning. Thank you for having me. I'm very pleased to be able to talk about this exciting program that is available specifically to employees of County of Trinity. And we have been referring to it as the Assist to Own Program. It actually is embedded underneath one of our other programs called Platinum. So if anyone after this presentation would like to go to the website and read about the program, it is a portion or a piece of our Platinum Down Payment Assistance Program. The relationship of County of Trinity to Golden State Finance Authority and RCRC was discussed by Supervisor Cox. Thank you. We are a joint powers authority that was formed by RCRC thirty years ago, specifically to address affordable housing issues in California. As a housing finance entity, we're able to take your standard mortgage products and wrap down payment assistance or down payment and closing cost assistance around them. So where whereas most borrowers are going to be looking at conventional or government financing such as FHA, VA, and USDA mortgages, and then coming in with down payment money out of their own funds by working with an agency or a public entity such as Golden State Finance Authority, they're qualifying for a mortgage loan at the same time that they have access to a portion of down payment and closing cost assistance. We have been doing this for thirty years, as I mentioned, and that means providing almost $650 million to California homebuyers and helping over eighty-four thousand people to purchase homes. The reason that we're so focused on homeownership goes deeper though than just helping people to get into homes easier. It's also because of the positive impacts that homeownership has on families and on the community as a whole. We know from studies year after year that homeownership can actually improve and stabilize the local economies and neighborhoods. There's a direct correlation to a reduction in crime when people actually own their homes. It increases their engagement in civic activities. It increases educational achievements within the family. But one step further, homeownership is also a good test of our financial security. It's a it's a wonderful way for us to build financial security for the future. And this is really important within those within economic hardships or families that are in lower income brackets and those who have disparities in homeownership such as other ethnicities, the African Americans and Hispanics and Asians, which are historically lower in homeownership rates than white Caucasian families. And homeownership can really help people to build financial security for the future. The Federal Reserve actually estimates that someone who owns a home has an estimated net value or net worth of $255,000 versus someone who doesn't own a home at $6,300. So real estate is a large factor in our net worth. But we know that even here in California, the largest challenge to homeownership is coming up with those associated funds for down payment and then closing costs as well. And so I want to show you the impact the down payment assistance can have on the purchase of a home. In this example, I'm using a sales price of $650,000 as an example here. And based on that, if a borrower was going with a conventional mortgage loan, they would only have to come in with 3% down. Gone are the days when we had to come in with 20% or 10% down. We do have low down payment mortgages out there. But there's still a portion of money, in this case, 3%, that would be required for down payment. And that's almost $20,000. With GSFA's Down Payment Assistance Programs, a borrower can get 5% in assistance. And so that's more than enough to cover the down payment and still leave them with about $12,000 to put towards closing costs as well. There's a lot of myths around down payment assistance that it's only for those people who are in low income brackets or people with exceptional credit that it's going to be harder to qualify for. And all of these things prevent people from pursuing it or they just they just don't even know about down payment assistance at all. In fact, the California Association of Realtors, year after year, finds that studies are showing that forty to seventy percent of homebuyers just don't even know that there are programs available to them, which is why I'm really pleased to be here today to talk about this program. So this program in particular, we refer to as the Assist to Own Program. And in order to be eligible for it, an employee must be employed by the county itself, whether that is a part-time, full-time, a per diem employee. It can even be someone who is retired from Trinity County and receiving benefits. That piece of verification or documentation of their employment or relationship to being an employee of County of Trinity is one extra piece of documentation that they would provide a provide the lender at the time that they apply for this program. But I want to go over some other eligibility guidelines and explain the form of the down payment assistance as well. So the program Assist to Own is available on not just purchases, but it's also available on refinances as well. And these are all going to be properties that a borrower and employee is going to be moving into as their owner-occupied residence. We don't do any financing of vacation homes or second homes or rental properties. Specifically, this program is specifically for owner-occupied residences only. But they can purchase that property anywhere in the state of California. They just have to be employed by Trinity County. There's no first-time homebuyer requirement on GSFA's programs, which means that if you were a homeowner in the past, you can qualify for assistance now. In fact, you can have a home that you own today, but as long as you are purchasing a property you're going to be moving into as your owner-occupied primary residence, you could qualify for Assist to Own. The properties are going to include one to four unit dwellings. So a single-family residence, a duplex, a triplex, even a fourplex can qualify. Townhomes, condominiums, and even some manufactured homes. Type of financing I mentioned are going to be your standard mortgage products, your FHA, VA, USDA, and conventional financing. And these are all thirty-year fixed-rate mortgages. Now, there is one loan limit that we do set, and that's our mortgage loan limit. It's 726,200. This is not a purchase price limit. This is just the limit on the amount of the first mortgage that we can finance. And the reason for that is we're not looking to finance million-dollar homes or provide assistance to people who are in high-income brackets. There are two additional overlays that a borrower would see when they apply for the program. There are always guidelines involved in qualifying for a mortgage loan. But we do set a minimum FICO score of 640 and a debt-to-income ratio of 50%. The FICO score minimum of 60/40, I think, is really important to to look at because that's not perfect credit. And a lot of people think, well, how am I going to apply for a mortgage loan when my credit has some dings in it or I have some history that I need to work on? 640 is very flexible, and so I encourage people to just look into the program even if they are concerned about where their credit lies today. Debt-to-income ratios has to do with the factor that a lender looks at in qualifying a borrower for a mortgage loan. It is looking at their amount of their liabilities or debts, credit card payments and car loans and their other obligations like that in comparison to their income. And that qualifying factor, called a debt-to-income ratio of up to 50% that's allowed with the GSFA Platinum and Assist to Own Program is very flexible and really does allow for a lot of people to qualify that might think that they couldn't qualify. The income limits on the programs, as I mentioned, also are set up to encourage low and moderate income homebuyers to qualify. And so with FHA, VA loans, which are government loans, we don't even have an income limit. We refer to the agencies for that. USDA, same thing. We're going to refer to whatever USDA allows in income limits based on where that property is. For conventional financing, GSFA does set an income limit, but it's very high. I use some examples here to show you how flexible that is. It's definitely going to even help moderate income families in Trinity, Shasta, Siskiyou, and probably some of those surrounding counties. But I at least wanted to pull these three examples. That income limit is $182,000. And it's based on qualifying income. So only the borrower that is using their income to qualify for the mortgage loan has to be at or below $182,000. This brings up another good question. You may be thinking, well, if you need two people in the household, do they both have to be employees of Trinity County? Only one person has to be an employee of Trinity County to qualify for the program. On the screen is also a lookup tool that you'll find on our website if you want to look at the income limits in other counties. It's always based on where that property is located. So let's look at the actual assistance that's being provided by Assist to Own. It's in two buckets of money. The first is what we've referred to as the Primary Down Payment Assistance, or DPA. It's three and a half percent of the first mortgage loan. Now, that's enough to cover the down payment requirement, whether it's an FHA loan or a conventional loan. It comes in the form of a second mortgage. So it is a loan, but it's a deferred loan deferred for thirty years, which means there's no monthly payments to pay that money back. And it has a 0% interest rate. And this is a feature of Assist to Own that does not exist across our other down payment assistance programs. It's what makes this program so attractive and so beneficial to the employees of Trinity County. With a zero note rate on that second mortgage, it means there's no interest being accrued. What they borrow in assistance to get into that home for down payment money, they do pay back at the end of thirty years or if they refinance the mortgage or they sell the property. But they're only paying back the amount that was provided in assistance, no additional interest on it. Now, in addition to the help for down payment, we also have an option in the program that can get them up to like five and a half percent total. And that's because they can add in up to 2% more in assistance in the form of a gift. Now, this is subject to market availability because we actually factor that into the rate on the first mortgage. What that means is that a mortgage loan where they're just getting the primary down payment assistance is going to have one rate. But if they need additional assistance for like closing costs, then the rate may go up a slight bit more so that we can provide that money to them. But I don't want you to be discouraged by this because our interest rates on these programs are very competitive. And the money that we're providing for the down payment, that primary DPA, is not factored into the rate. So we can give you give the employee the best mortgage loan rates that we can as we work with the investment market. So how does one get started? Well, the first step is to get in contact with a GSFA participating lender. We have over a hundred and fifty lenders in California that are approved by us to offer the Assist to Own Program. They've entered into agreements with us to abide by the program guidelines. And we furnish, they're the ones who would be furnishing to the employee the interest rates and the applicable percentage rates as well. And they're really the person to sit down and talk to the employee about their specific situation, their finances, and what's going to be the best fit. And so we highly encourage the first step for that employee to be getting in contact with a loan officer who works with a GSFA participating lender and ask specifically to talk about this program, which GSFA called Assist to Own. They're also the entity that's going to process the loan application and process the mortgage loan itself. We delegate all the underwriting to our approved lenders, which means that when you're purchasing a home with Assist to Home, with Assist to Own, it's not going to slow down the escrow process. There's only one step where the lender actually has to provide us verification of their employment and then lock in the interest rate on the first mortgage and get the commitment letter for the down payment assistance. The rest of the steps are going to be just like qualifying for a standard mortgage loan where the borrower comes in with their own funds. We have a website available, gsahome.org, where they can learn more about Assist to Own, where all of the participating lenders are furnished. They can get additional educational videos about the home buying process. And if they wanted to, they can call our Client Relations Office Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and ask specific questions about the Assist to Own program as well. Down payment assistance, wait, I'm sorry, one more.
Sorry, I thought you were finished.
Down payment assistance is not going to be the right fit for everyone, but it is a tool that someone can use, an employee can use, to build financial security now versus having to wait. I ask you to think about that $31,000 that I used in that example in the earlier slide. At a savings, at putting away $500 a month, it would still take sixty-three months or over five years for a borrower to save up $31,000. And in the meantime, interest rates continue to rise, rents continue to rise, and we know historically home prices are going to continue to rise. So let me ask you, are the employees in a position to start building their financial security now by using down payment and closing cost assistance from Golden State Finance Authority? So thank you for having me today, and I'd like to open it up for any questions.
Thank you, Carolyn. Appreciate it. Questions? Very much so. I have one quick question for you, Carolyn, before we let you go. You had mentioned that only one borrower has to be the county employee and that only one borrower's income could be considered for qualifying if their income is the only one being evaluated. Do those have to be the same person or can one be the spouse?
We need to have the employee of Trinity County on the mortgage loan itself. So we do need to include them. So at least their income needs to be a factor for qualifying. But if they have a spouse or someone else who also wants to include their income as well to help them qualify, they could be added to the loan. But the employee has to be a part of the transaction for them to qualify for Assist to Own.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right.
And I just want to say one Supervisor Cox, I just want to thank you for those on the board here. Supervisor Cox is on the Board of Directors for Golden State Finance Authority and is one of the board members who helped approve this program. We're actually using funds from Golden State Finance Authority to provide that down payment assistance piece, which is why we don't have an interest rate on it. It's not factored into the mortgage loan itself or the rate on the mortgage loan itself. So this is a unique benefit that our board has made possible for our GSFA member counties, of which Trinity is one.
Nice. Thank you. And I guess my one request would be to our interim CEO to make sure that maybe there are staff members who aren't watching this presentation today that we make sure everybody becomes aware of the opportunity they have. Perfect. Thank you. All right, Carolyn, thanks. Have a great day. All right, moving on, item 1.2, receive a presentation from Trinity PUD General Manager Paul Hooser regarding historical Trinity River flows and the cost implications. Thank you for being here. Welcome.
Thank you for having me. I really appreciate the invitation. I think Ashley's going to help. She's already got it up. And I would encourage questions from the board, even stop me during the presentation. It's just a short slide deck. But before I get into it, I wanted to kind of address the winter variable flow issue. I know there's a lot of talk in the community about it. You know, specifically around the construction work that was being done on the dam pin stock. I'm in close, I have a lot of interaction with Bureau of Reclamation employees. I was very aware of that construction project. You probably understand it, but there may be people in the meeting that don't. That the pin stock that's out in the middle of the lake that was out of the water, that's the intake for the power plant. So normally, all of the water that goes into the Trinity River flows through that intake and it goes through the power turbines, generates electricity. There's a feature of that, there's a cap on it where they can de-water that pin stock for maintenance purposes to work on the gate valves. With this latest work, they installed some flow meters. That pin stock had not been de-watered since the dam was constructed, finished in sixty-three or sixty-four. They knew that that sealing cap did not seal. So this work was planned in advance and it wasn't planned in conjunction with the winter variable flows. Those were planned independently. They go back sometime. There's other people more expert on the winter variable flows. But the point I want to address is I'm confident and I'm, it's part of my job. I really pay attention to releases that bypass power generation. Just bluntly, I complain about them vigorously to Reclamation or WAP employees because it in fact, it affects our power rates. And there was not a coordinated effort to release water from the dam, I believe, in order to keep that pin stock out of the water for this work. I had assurances, multiple assurances. I brought it up at every meeting I was in during this time period. But I had multiple assurances that if the lake rose and they couldn't complete the work this year, they would just wait until the lake dropped again, which unfortunately seems to happen with real regularity. And if you think about it, they haven't used that device since the dam was built. So there was no major urgency to do it now. And I know there's a lot of talk in the community. You know, if you look at the circumstances, like maybe it's kind of natural to look and say, wow, we had a big barge out there doing work. They were trying to keep the water levels low. But I'm confident there was not any kind of coordinated effort to do that in terms of the winter variable flows. The presentation I'm going to go through is, I actually gave this a similar presentation to the board in 2014 and I think again in 2019. So I appreciate being asked again because I think it's important for you as supervisors to understand the cost ramifications of flows on the Trinity. I'm going to try to refrain from editorial comments. Please don't egg me on because I have a difficult time refraining refraining from editorial comments sometimes. But I want to kind of stick to the facts on what the flows mean to Trinity PUD customers. I know that's not everybody in the county, but that is a majority of folks in the county. And I know all of you have Trinity PUD customers in your districts. So Ashley, if you bring that slide deck up. So you can go to the next. So this is a rough history or chronology of how flows have changed on the Trinity over time. So right after the dam was built, 120,000 acre feet was the amount of water allocated annually to the Trinity River. You know, they knew Trinity's roughly a two-million-acre watershed. The dam holds a little less than two and a half million acre feet. And they knew initially that this was going to have a big impact on fish. That's why they built the hatchery there, obviously. The next real change was Judge Andrus in 1981. That 120,000 acre feet was moved to 340,000 acre feet with some flexibility in dry years to release less down the Trinity. You see that in parentheses, 140,000 to 220,000 acre feet in dry years. And again, to keep this manageable in terms of complexity, some of these things are kind of amalgamated together. The next big change came in October of 1992. That's when the Central Valley Project Improvement Act was passed by Congress. It was signed by the first President Bush. That's CVPIA, Central Valley Project Improvement Act. And that kind of codified 340,000 acre feet for Trinity, for the river in all water year types. In 2000, there was a record of decision by the Bureau of Reclamation and it was litigated by both power and water contractors. And as a result, you see those subsequent changes in flows on the Trinity. And these were all Judge Wanger. You know, in 2001, that went to 368,000 acre feet. In 2002, 468,000 feet. And in 2003, 452,400. And the next slide will show, these are what the Record of Decision has kind of codified for flows for the Trinity based on the water year type. And the water year type is determined in April of every year. Matter of fact, we're only a couple of weeks away probably from determining the water year type. And you see those different flows. So in the driest year, 368,600 acre feet for rod flows, all the way up to an extremely wet year of 815,200 acre feet. Now, we don't know, I don't know what the flows will be this year, but I can tell you it's either going to be a wet year or an extremely wet year. And to put that in context, so you know, either 701,000 acre feet for flows on the Trinity or 815,000 acre feet, the current storage, I looked up this morning, well, it's as of yesterday, the current storage of Trinity reservoir is 915,000 acre feet right now. So just kind of gives you a So just kind of gives you a perspective of flows, how much water is going to be released down the Trinity. Obviously, there's a big snowpack above that. So you can go to the next slide. This kind of gives a graphic representation of generation and this is the foundation of where the cost impacts to Trinity PUD customers are. So three hundred and sixty kilowatt hours per acre foot. Don't get hung up on the number, but rather the proportions, that's the generation that happens at Trinity. And now I might add, at the beginning of these winter variable flows, we were bypassing Trinity generation. So there was no generation. While work was being completed, even though that cap was in place and sealed, they de-watered the pin stock for maintenance purposes and they were installing some flow meters and some other things. Had that work been pushed out, you know, three or four weeks, I mean, well, not the work, had the flow, the increased flows been pushed out three or four weeks, we probably would have saved between three hundred and three hundred fifty thousand dollars in foregone generation. And in later slides, I'm going to get into how that's calculated. I just mentioned that because the sixty thousand acre feet that are the winter variable flows, that is just a portion of what's going to be released this year. It's a portion of either the seven hundred and one thousand or the eight hundred fifteen thousand, depending on water year type. Had those flows, those winter variable flows, had they not completed all of that maintenance work on the pin stock, those additional flows would have resulted probably in about seven hundred thousand dollars in foregone generation. So luckily, the maintenance work got done faster. Now, folks like myself always advocate for delaying the flows or timing them in such a way that we maximize generation. And I don't want to give the impression that it costs Trinity PUD, you know, three hundred fifty thousand dollars. That's the total cost. Typically, we're about five percent of the Central Valley Project. It varies. In drought years, like right now, we're about six percent, but average, you know, overall, we're about five percent. It's a good way to calculate what the impact, direct impact is to Trinity PUD. You notice the other bars, Carr, Powerhouse, five hundred forty five kilowatt hours per acre foot, Spring Creek, five hundred fifty five. Keswick, that's seventy is right on the line. But we get, we have rights to twenty five percent of the power generated by the water diverted from the Trinity Basin over to the Sacramento Basin. And if you do the math there, actually, that math is based on a full reservoir. Seventy seven percent roughly of the generation is Carr, Spring Creek and Keswick. Right now, it's more than eighty percent because as you have lower head pressure at Trinity, that three hundred sixty kilowatt hours per acre foot, that's based on a full reservoir and we don't get that. Obviously, Lewiston hardly varies, so the Carr, Spring Creek and Keswick numbers don't change. Well, Keswick doesn't change based on Keswick reservoir, not changing. If you go to the next slide. And I apologize for the math, but in trying to, you know, get the understanding of how this is generated. From the previous slide, the weighted average rod flows are six hundred twenty four thousand, five hundred acre feet. When I look back at the presentation I did here in twenty fourteen, the weighted rod flows were five hundred ninety four thousand, five hundred acre feet. So what is happening over time is more and more water is being released down the river and it's water over and above the prescribed rod flows. I know if you follow this, you'll think back and there's been instances of IC. There are multiple instances where more water is released to help fish and, but it adds to the cost to the PUD. But the math here is, if you take that weighted average, six hundred twenty four thousand acre feet, subtract it from the prior minimum flows, the nineteen eighty one minimum flows, because the PUD came into existence in nineteen eighty two, the increase, the weighted average increase in flows is a little, it's two hundred eighty four thousand, five hundred acre feet. If you multiply that by the eleven hundred and seventy kilowatt hours per acre feet, that's almost three hundred and thirty three thousand megawatt hours of reduced generation. To put that in perspective, the PUD for all our customers' annual usage is a hundred and thirty thousand roughly. Hundred thirty thousand, hundred thirty thousand megawatt hours. So, you know, that's, the foregone generation exceeds our entire usage for a year, average. And obviously, you got to keep in mind, these things vary from drought years to wet years. But if we average it over time, these are the numbers. If you take that reduced generation because of additional flows down the Trinity, because we lost the generation at Carr, Spring Creek and Keswick. And you use an eighty five dollar per megawatt hour number, you come up with over twenty eight million dollars in annual generation value that's lost. Again, that's not, you know, our annual budget's a little over fifteen million. That's not what Trinity PUD sees as a direct cost. But that cost is, is the cost borne by all the power customers of the Central Valley Project. You know, and that eighty five dollars a megawatt hour, it gets complicated, but that's a conservative estimate of the value of that generation. Right now, that number's probably running seventy six to seventy eight dollars a megawatt hour, but as you get into summer times, it spikes really high. And before I jump to the next slide, and you know, five percent of this number is roughly direct impact to Trinity PUD and it's going to characterize what that means in terms of rates. The bigger jeopardy for Trinity PUD and our customers is actually the twenty eight million. Because, well, I'll just be really candid about it. The other customers of the Central Valley Project were a first preference customer. The preference or base resource customers, entities like Redding, Sacramento Municipal Utility District, Roseville, Santa Clara, Palo Alto. There's a large number of them. They're seeing that twenty eight million dollar impact, you know, minus our five percent, if you will. And what's happened over time as flows have gone up is the value of the generation relative to cost has declined. And the biggest fear I have is that those other customers at some point walk away and they're subsidizing our really good deal. The reason our cost is really good is we, Trinity PUD, we're an area of origin. We don't pay restoration costs directly. We don't directly fund the budget, say, of the Trinity River Restoration Program or Restoration Efforts on the Sacramento. But all those other customers do. And as you chip away at the value of the product, at some point, I'm worried those other customers will decide to walk away, that, you know, the cost of solar is dropping and choose other options. That's one, the primary reason I'm so active in these issues and trying to keep the value of the generation higher is it's not so much the rate impact for us, that's obviously a factor, it's if those folks walk away. We're looking at dramatic increases in cost. And I don't even know what that would look like for sure, but if you can go to the next slide. Then this, this slide just basically takes the twenty eight million, multiplies it by five percent and then puts it in terms of rates. So, you know, our annual budget's a little over fifteen million. Our annual sales are about thirteen million. So this number represents about ten point nine percent of our sales number. So our rates would be about eleven percent lower if flows were still what they were in nineteen eighty one or eighty two. You know, again, nobody likes higher rates, but this is not a catastrophic number compared to the impact of if those other customers decide to walk away. Another thing I'd like to put in perspective, I mentioned that we don't pay the direct costs of restoration activities. Trinity PUD does not, but the other customers do. The Central Valley Project Improvement Act in nineteen ninety two established a restoration fund. In nineteen ninety two dollars, it was legislatively established at thirty million dollars. Today, that number because of inflation is over sixty million dollars. So we're not paying any of that sixty million, but all of those other Central Valley Project customers are. And when you add the cost of restoration on top of the cost of operating the power plants and the transmission lines to get the power delivered, we're reaching a tipping point where it may be cheaper to choose other alternatives. To put that sixty million restoration expense in perspective, the power revenue requirement for this year is just under fifty eight million. That's the total cost to operate all the dam power plants and the transmission lines to deliver the power. And we're paying, you know, our percentage share of that, the PUD is. But the restoration expense this year will exceed the entire cost of operating the project. And that's, that's a, it's a staggering figure, actually. And it's, it's kind of on what I call cruise control. It goes, that restoration expense goes up with whatever the Consumer Price Index is every year. And those prices are going up much more fa, much more quickly than the cost of power. So the next slide, that might be, oh, there's, there's another. This is not an emergency yet, but it's something supervisors you should be aware of. I mentioned that we get twenty five percent of the power generated by that water diversion. That sets our entitlement. We're not using all of our entitlement, obviously. But as the flows have changed because of the record of decision, there's obviously less generation. The way they calculate the maximum entitlement is it's a twenty year rolling average. And if you go back, you know, flows really changed in two thousand and five. By twenty twenty five, those rod flows will pretty much be fully integrated into our allocation. And I mentioned a hundred and thirty thousand megawatt hours earlier. I think I put a hundred and thirty five thousand megawatt hours on this slide here. We're actually seeing a decline in load as cannabis industry is contracting some. But so if you look back at Trinity's entitlement, two thousand and four, we were entitled to three hundred sixty seven thousand megawatt hours. And you see the decline. It, I'll mention that two thousand and nine and two thousand and fourteen, there was no change. But the way they set the rules on, on this twenty year rolling average, recalculated every five years, is if there's not a ten percent change, it doesn't change. So between oh nine and oh fourteen, I think there were some wet water years in there and it didn't meet the ten percent threshold. But then obviously, that caught up with us in twenty nineteen. So now our allocation is three hundred and two thousand acre feet roughly. We're using one thirty five. I fully expect the next, the next recalculation will be in twenty twenty four and we will see a reduction from the three oh two, will be into the two hundreds. And while we're not in any danger yet of not having enough allocation to serve all our customers, if, you know, those two numbers can collide at some point. We hope to see some load growth, though that's very modest. But we would like not to see that entitlement number continue to shrink. I'd like to say there's not, after the next recalculation, there shouldn't be big changes unless there are future changes to flows on the Trinity, a new record of decision or something like that. So I think that's the last slide. And I would, any questions you have, I'd love to try to answer them.
Thank you for your effort to create this slide deck and to be here and present. Questions?
Well, I have a question. Thank you very much for your presentation. When you said the power, the users in Palo Alto's Center Rosa will walk, where are they walking to?
They would choose market purchases. They might decide to develop a renewable project in some location, California or not. They might decide to jointly participate in that. What, I mean, there is a market for power purchases, obviously beyond the hydroelectricity that's supplied by the Central Valley Project. And I spend a lot of time thinking about that exact question, Liam, is, you know, what are their real options? What's the likelihood that they will leave? You know, candidly, if the state wasn't moving to a zero carbon requirement, CVP Power would already be out of market and people would be leaving. The biggest indicator to me that folks are serious about it, the marketing contract is a twenty year contract. And just a couple of years ago, the Western Air Power Administration, everybody signed a new one. But before anybody else would sign, one of the conditions they required was a two year cancellation clause that had never existed before. And the federal government had to put that clause in because people weren't willing to sign up. So that was an indicator to me that they're worried about the price and they're going to keep their options open.
And, thank you. Paul, you, I just want to make sure I got some of these key points, right? Because just even trying to keep up with all the data points is.
Sorry about that.
I'll have to go back and watch the video. Key points, one, as you started with to address a lot of the concerns and the original reason that I asked for a presentation is to clear up this issue of people with concern that the dam maintenance is what was causing water to be released and why the lake level was not going up. And, and what I'm hearing from you as someone who lives and breathes by what's going on with that dam and the water, you're saying everyone that you've spoken to, all your meetings, everything says, no, that is not happening.
Yeah, and I'll reiterate, I'm completely confident in that and I'm a very skeptical person. I challenge reclamation on issues constantly. And believe me, if I thought otherwise, I would freely share that with you, but there just wasn't a coordinated effort here. They hadn't, they hadn't been able to de-water that pin stock since nineteen sixty three. There was, they didn't have to finish it this year. And I know the, the winter variable flows, you know, as power customers, we even looked at those. And there may be some minor con, minor, minor cost impact to releasing that water earlier. But it's not significant. The overall volume of the flows is what determines it. Now, if you really wanted to get in the nuance, we'd want to release water when power rates are highest, right? Because that's when it has the most value, but obviously, that doesn't happen. But the fluctuation in power rates is a very minimal impact and even trying to predict those way in advance. So when I first looked at the winter variable flows, the PUD and power customers in general really didn't have any comment on them because they just didn't have a meaningful cost impact. The timing of the flows, it's, it's the overall flows that have the big cost impact.
Okay, so the, and that was another point is the, when you talk about the overall impact and what could end up being in a rate increase to PUD customers, it's less about this new release schedule than it is about the total volume released through the program.
That's correct. With, with one little nuance this time, and that's if, if we could have waited three or four weeks, we could have completed the maintenance on that pin stock. Now, I know we're only talking about a few hundred thousand, not that that's trivial, but in the scheme of the budget, that's not a lot. But, but I'm one and others, other power customers do the same. We lobby constantly for reclamation to take power generation into account when they decide on when they're going to do releases. It's not that, we know that the releases are going to happen, but if you can shift the timing by minor amounts that, you know, in our view have negligible of any measurable impact on restoration activities, why not do it for, you know, for the power generation benefit? I, the phrase I use with reclamation, I say, look, I know power, we're not going to be at the top of the list, but we at least want to be on the list of your considerations and oftentimes we aren't.
And you have a vehicle for sharing that view and request?
Yeah, we have a very powerful vehicle. It wouldn't surprise you. Over time, it's been very difficult for both reclamation and the Western Air Power Administration to get appropriations from Congress. If you go back in time, you know, a couple of decades ago, the way these projects operated is they got appropriations from Congress, they spent the money on what they wanted to spend it on and then customers like us reimburse them and that money went, got sent back to the treasurer, treasury, the federal treasury. But over time, it's been difficult to get appropriations. So they came up with this idea called advanced funding from customers. So Trinity PUD and those other customers I mentioned, there's a longer list. We actually approve projects for reclamation and the Western Air Power Administration and we agree to give them the money in advance and we get a credit on our bill. So in the case of reclamation, we control over ninety percent of their power generation budget. So.
I'm sorry, who's the we?
We is all the collective power customers, the Central Valley Project power customers. I sit on a board called the Operations and Maintenance Governance Board and we approve. We, there's actually a technical committee that also sit on, we kind of study the projects they want to do in advance and decide whether we're going to pre-fund those. The idea being, well, if they generate power generation, we want to maintain the long term health of the generation fleet. We approve those, but as you can imagine, when you control ninety percent of somebody's, well, I'd like to think we have more influence than we do. We should have more than we do. But it is a lever. Obviously, it's a collective group. You have to have a majority agree. And we've, we've tried to exercise some of that in the past with. And we've, we've tried to exercise some of that in the past with, uh, with maintenance projects that they've done.
And was there an attempt this year with, you know, what you've told us is that there was just a three-week delay? We could have, was there an attempt to do that this year or?
No, there, there wasn't. And, and it's a blunt tool, right? They bring projects to us years in advance and get them on the books. There's procurement issues. So the ability to influence a, a project really late in the game is, is almost non-existent. But, you know, I, I like to think that we, we get some, uh, you know, we get listened to when we do control 90% plus of the budget. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then going back to some of your math, the big takeaway that I came away with, I just want to make sure I have it right, is that the other participants in this collective, if you will, subsidize the rates for PUD, which is partly why we have such great rates. They, they, not PUD customers, pay for restoration. And the cost that they pay for restoration is now more than the cost they pay for power generation.
That's correct.
And therefore that's your concern that somebody eventually says, well, if I can just go buy it in the market and I don't have to include the cost of the restoration, even if the market is a higher price than what I get from cheap power in Trinity or out of this program, it's, I might be less in total because I don't have this burden, if you will, of the cost of the program.
That's exactly it.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. And help me understand how much of this, because you, you showed us historical numbers and rulings and everything else that determine how much water does get to go out. What, if anything, is in the power of the community, the board, anything else to influence and, and help avoid what you paint a picture of could be coming our way?
Well, as a board supervisor, you know, as a group, you could communicate with the Bureau of Reclamation. Ultimately, they have discretion. You know, the, the Central Valley Project Improvement Act established the Trinity Management Council. And yeah, I won't get in, you, you're familiar with how that operates. But ultimately, reclamation has discretion on releases. You know, I noticed this year, as an example, last year about 250,000 acre feet went over the hill. Instead of, you know, got diverted to the Sacramento Basin. This year, even with a massive water year, reclamation's anticipating 100,000 acre feet going over. And, you know, it's obvious why. It's, the reservoir is extremely low. And even though the reservoir is extremely low, we're still going to release over 700,000 acre feet. Because of that, there's just not water to go over the hill. You know, in one year, that's bad. As a trend, that becomes a disaster for Trinity PUD. And, and the record decision, it never, um, there's nothing in there that takes into account reservoir storage levels. But I, I believe, um, power customers have communicated this to reclamation over and over that they have the discretion to take into account, um, reservoir levels, if they like. And maybe it's time for a different mechanism. You know, I talked to folks in the community and it does seem very strange to be releasing large amounts of water when the reservoir is empty. Or not empty, but very low.
So Paul, are you done?
I think the, there was one other thing, but go ahead, because I, I'm.
You're good?
I gotta get back in my head. Go ahead.
Okay, so, carryover storage, we'll talk about that. So at some years, we critically dry years, we release 360,000 acre feet. Extremely wet years, we release 900,000 acre feet. And that's mandated by the rod. I agree with you that we shouldn't spend all our money every year and hope that we get some more money next year. We should bank some money in our reservoir. If you were in charge of it all and you said that you would like to tweak some of the flows in certain ways, at what time and how much would you want to move these flows to help PUD? And what proposal would you put forward to start the mechanism to change Bureau of Reclamation's thinking on not carrying over any water of the allotted, we'll say 701,000 during a wet year?
So to kind of simplify this, and I love the question, is I think we would manage the lake more full is the short way of answering it. And what that means is, um, you still might have very similar releases. But you would manage from a four, full reservoir, obviously with some cushion for, um, for flood control, for safety of dam reasons. I think the path to get there is a new study by reculma- reclamation. Things have obviously changed since 2000, because keep in mind, this study goes back to 2023 years ago. Hydrology's changed, uh, inflows to the lake have changed. You know, there, there's a lot of things that's changed, but I think it's a new study and a new record of decision. And I know that scares a lot of folks. It even scares, uh, a lot of the power customers because they're, when I bring this up, they say, hey, Paul, it could get worse. And, but my answer to that is, well, you don't have much left to lose. So.
In what respect?
Because they'll walk away if it gets worse.
All right, so let's talk about, I guess, the other side of the, the dam. The fish part of it, which is restoration's task. And obviously, we both know there's water temperature objectives that have to be met down the city, down river. So there does need to be a certain amount of flow, you know, let go on the fish side of the river for restoration purposes and temperature objectives for juvenile adults or adult salmonoids. So with that in mind, do you think the variation between the 369,000 and the critically dry year and the 900,000, the critically, or extremely wet year? I guess obviously the record decision says that these fish can live at a critically dry year at 369. They can also live at 900,000 in extremely wet year. At what point in the five desert nations that we have right now, do you start to want to store water? And what do you think is a good water storage level? Minimum pool for Trinity Lake? So this year, excuse me, this year we got down into the 500,000-ish acre feet range.
Almost a dead pool in November, almost. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, uh, this is not dodging the question, maybe it is a little bit. But my answer would be, one, that's what a real study determines. But the obvious thing is with a more full reservoir, we need less water because we have a better cold water pool. So colder water released means less water has to be released to meet those temperature objectives. It is a huge benefit of managing the reservoir more full. And that means you have to take into account storage levels before you set releases. It can't be just arbitrarily based on the water year, independent of storage levels.
So you would, you would want to pocket more water, we'll say.
The wet years, absolutely. Is that where you were going?
No.
Oh, sorry.
Well, I'll go there. That was, that's good. But I think that for me, you know, I feel the same way you do about water storage. The lake, obviously, I feel was mismanaged down to 19% or so. Last November, December, it was probably the driest we've ever been. And again, this year, although we've had a, you know, unbelievable amount of snow and rain, we're still probably going to get to maybe 50, 60% full.
51 yesterday, so, yeah.
Yeah, so it's going to take a lot and we're, we're not, we'll probably be the driest reservoir in the state, I would imagine, percentage-wise.
Without question, by far the driest in the state.
So even with the huge amount of water, snowpack, water content in that snowpack, we're still coming up pretty poorly on this water storage system that we have now. And I'm on TMC and Heidi is also, and you know, we're, I go back and forth about what's a, what's a good minimum pool. And I, you know, we've got the lake at one, at 2.4, we'll say maxed out. Would you agree that 1.2, 1.1 is a good minimum pool?
I, I'd, I'd really want to see some analysis on that. You know, just to, to throw out a number here, I, yeah, it's probably beyond my expertise. But it's certainly, we do need a minimum pool. And that just gets to managing that lake more full. You, you point out something really important. We are, Trinity is by far the lowest reservoir in the state. No other reservoir has this level of mandated releases irrespective of lake levels, of storage levels. And it makes it incredibly difficult for our reservoir to recover. I mean, if you've driven by Shasta, you see how it's coming up and, and ours is not. Now, now granted, we got snow packed, we'll, we'll peak in June. It, it is a different reservoir for sure. But with the releases that are going to happen, we're not going to see, I mean, we're going to see gains, but not the gains we should see in terms of reservoir levels.
And that reminds, oh, go ahead.
So with that in mind and knowing that we don't have the watershed, we'll say that Shasta has, we have a much smaller kind of condensed way of gathering water. You know, we, we don't have 10 different rivers coming into our, our lake. I guess I'm still looking for that trigger, that answer to, at what point we're at, do we begin and how much do we begin to bank water, store water? You know, that's going to be an awful big ask for restoration who are in, you know, not restoration, reclamation, who are in the business of selling this water. So you have, you know, fish over here, but we've got PUD here, we've got the selling of water to Central Valley. On the other hand, you know, it's a, it's a myriad of kind of problems that, you know, I, I do agree with you about the lake level storage. I just don't, it's a tough question to answer. When do we begin or what is the minimum amount and how do we get across to, to reclamation? You know, you can go up to the dam and it says not one drop of this water will be used until the fish are restored here. Well, apparently they use a lot of drops because it got to 19% last year. So that's a lot of drops of water. What, what do we do to, to, to prevent that from happening again? Where, where's our first step? What do we do as supervisors and what can I do as a TMC member? Someone's obviously involved in the fish also. And, you know, the, uh, cost of power to our consumers is important to me also on the PUD side.
Yeah, i- i- if you, one place to start is a letter to the Bureau of Reclamation, Ernest Conant, to say, reclamation needs to change its criteria for releases. And you ought, that reclamation should take into account, uh, reservoir storage levels. I think that's a start, you know, does that lead to a full study? I mean, if you, you asked me kind of my dream scenario, we'd manage the reservoir so it was just below the flood curve all the time. That's as full as you can manage it, right?
Sure.
And I see your smile because, and I smile too, because that's completely unrealistic. Not only do restoration folks don't not want that, the water customers would hate that, power customers would love it. But we're, you know, for restoration's at the top of the list and water's not much farther below them. We're way down 10 or 11 on the list, so power's not going to get that. That would be great for power because more generation happens when you generate with a higher head, which is a full reservoir. Great, it's also great for recreation on the lake as well, but that's never going to happen. But something between where we're at now and there would be fantastic.
So with the lobbying power that PUD and its friends has, would it be wise for us to join hands in a way and go to reclamation and, and start this conversation up? As a combined effort?
I think it would be very wise to strengthen those numbers would, um, get us some attention, I think.
All right. So I guess going forward here, um, myself and probably Heidi, who's on TMC with, with me also, would like to sit down and start beginning to come up with the, you know, the initial way that we begin to, to bank water, we'll, we'll say to store water. I think the way that we do it now is pretty, is pretty careless in a way, um, for, for all, for fish, for production. So I, you know, I'd like to sit down with you and, um, and, and talk about a way we can get this lake to some sort of minimum level at a certain time of the year. That would benefit, fit all restoration, to fish and PUD.
I, I'd love to do it. And obviously there's differing interests. But I think there is a ton of common ground and plenty of room to make some improvements that everybody would benefit from.
Okay, the, uh, the other thing that I just wanted to clarify you, um, we were focusing a lot on the restoration releases. If I'm remembering right from data I've seen, there's actually more water released for just, uh, going over the, the hill, if you will, uh, and down the Sacramento, that has nothing to do with power generation either than is released by river restoration. Is that?
Well, now, if it's released, so one of the main things I do is when water's released, we want all the power plants to be operating, Carr, Spring Creek, we want to capture all the generation. And most of the time that occurs, there, you know, there are some maintenance issues, sometimes that doesn't occur. So, but when water goes over the hill, we get 100% of the generation. When it goes down the river, right now, we're getting about 20% of the generation as if it went over the hill.
Gotcha. So it's more going the other direction, but you get all that if it goes towards, okay, thank you.
But we, you know, as, as a PUD, it's not that in any way we're recommending de-watering the river, right? It's just, um, the flow, and, and I, really the point of the presentation was to detail the cost of the flows.
Right.
Yeah.
So Paul.
The last thing, because I heard, you know, about the lake levels and so forth. And I, I think there's a lot of benefits to having the lake level higher. I have, uh, heard concerns from experts involved in process that it would be a very dangerous thing for our lake to be full all the time because we don't have the release capacity. But if we then had huge inflows, our dam would fail. So I don't know that that's fact, but it's presented by someone who seems to know his facts.
So, so that's why, why I said my dream scenario is managed just below the flood curve. So that's what those flood curves take into account. It only lets the reservoir get as high, it takes into account that danger. And it, and they have, you know, history since 1963 on that. Um, so yeah, you can't manage it full, but it can be full at the end of June because we know there's not going to be a flood event then, so.
Thank you.
So that being, being said, um, obviously it's everybody's dream to manage it right at, right at the edge. And safety of the dam concerns are, are important. Then again, when you factor in the contracts we have in Central Valley, you know, pretty much a rarity that we're going to see, uh, overflow at the spillway or the.
Yeah.
It doesn't have very.
I completely agree.
I think they're going to sell more than they're going to let fill up, would be my, my guess. So I guess I come back to now that you say 80% when it goes over the, the hill to the other side, we'll say to 20% when it goes down the river. Since the winter variable flows took effect in, um, February 15th till April 15th, we are going to put 121,000 acre feet down the river.
I thought that was 60,000 acre feet, is it?
Well, the combined amount.
Oh, yes, the, but the additional flows are additional 60. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so that's 121,000 acre feet. And I'm not sure if we're going to get to an extremely wet year this year. I think the consensus was we'd probably get to a wet year. I would love to see extremely wet.
I would love not to, because that means more releases.
Well.
That's another 215,000 acre feet at the lake, so.
But it, it'd be good to fill the lake up a little bit there. But nonetheless, um, I think at our last TMC meeting, Trinity River Restoration said, oh, a wet year, which, which is much better than critically dry or dry.
Sure.
So you basically on 121,000 out of, we'll say, just 700,000 acre feet that was going to go, you, you just lost, you know, 15% or so of that to the winter variable flows that you only made 20% production value off of instead of 80%, correct?
Well, here's a way to look at that, though. As long as that's coming out of rod water, it's not additional water. Now, if, if they had proposed an additional 60,000 acre feet over and above water, uh, rod water allocation, the power customers might have litigated over it. We certainly would have objected. And while there is, and, and I'm ignoring, for simplicity, I'm ignoring the fact that the pin stock was out of commission for several weeks during those releases. Because then during that period, we actually lost the Trinity generation. But if we ignore that, which is the case in most years, if these winter variable flows continue is, all we're losing is the difference in the cost of the power this time of year versus a later release. Which there probably is something there because, you know, the spot price now is $76 to $78 a megawatt hour. It's probably going to be north of $80. But when you, and, and as we get into warmer weather and the state's demand goes up, you know, we're winter peaking, but the state is dramatically summer peaking. So that's why power customers didn't. So that's why power customers didn't oppose it because as long as it's coming out of the rod allocation, you, it's going to be released anyway. We've already lost it. So um, while there's some cost associated with the timing of release, it's very minor.
Thank you very much, Paul.
So one, one other question, Paul, I guess I would ask since I, I think you mentioned earlier in your presentation there, the, the what I call the pulse flows in September, late August, September, that I don't think are calculated into the rod flows. Um, how do you feel about those?
Anything outside the rod flows, we oppose. Uh, and I say we, that's power customers and we, we actually lobby reclamation to get what we call foregone, foregone generation. We get, power customers get paid for that in some instances. Um, for instance, if there is a water sale, let's say one water entity owns water in, in Shasta reservoir and they sell it to another entity. If it doesn't go through all the generation, reclamation calculates how much power would have been generated and the value of that. And they make as part of that water purchase, they make the purchaser pay for the foregone generation. And of course, it's, it is a deterrent to water sales. I've been lobbying and others to use the same methodology on the Trinity. It has never been used because if it's for restoration efforts, one, who's going to pay it, right? That means the U S taxpayer has to pay it. That's in my opinion, the main reason we've never been successful, but to long-winded answer, we lobby against those additional flows. And we also lobby, hey, reimburse us. If you're gonna, if you're going to release that water, well, first thing you do is you ought to take it out of the rod. And if you're not taking it out of the rod, either don't do it or pay us for the generation we lost. And we have yet to be successful with that on the Trinity.
So how would you know right now that we're going to need pulse flows? Not that you would, not that I would this coming August, September?
Well, what I would say is if, if the allocation is seven hundred and one thousand acre feet, why not hold back fifty, sixty, a hundred thousand acre feet? Just in case you need them. That would be my answer.
That could be my answer too.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. And, you know, I'd like to get together with you and begin the, the talks of, you know, water storage and, and pulling some water, banking some water. I think there's some times of years right now, I think a hundred and twenty-one thousand acre feet that we just lost was, could have been used at a different time for water temperature objectives and all. So we'll go into that a little bit later, but thank you very much.
Thank you very much for having me and appreciate the interaction. I'd love to sit down and talk about how we might influence things.
I have one more question before you go, sorry. Um, and you may not have the answer to this, but considering that, um, you know, we've been to the point of the conversation where perhaps a letter to Mr. Conant indicating that we feel maybe the um, reclamation needs to change its criteria and, and kind of look at that again. I reviewed the presentation we received last August in preparation for this meeting today. And so again, you may not know the answer to this. I can ask, answer those folks, but considering it's on the same topic, if you know, it was stated that the county could participate, could be a participant as a cooperative agency in some NIPA review of storage and flow management of the reservoir. Um, do you have any idea what that is? It was stated that within a year, this opportunity would come along. Is that something that you see happening? It's on the horizon?
It's, to be honest, it's not something I'm aware of.
Okay.
But I'll ask some folks at reclamation, see if I can find out.
Okay. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item one point three, adopt a proclamation recognizing the week of April ninth through fifteenth, twenty twenty-three as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, no fiscal impact. A proclamation of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity recognizing the week of April ninth through fifteen, twenty twenty-three as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Whereas in nineteen ninety-four, President William J. Clinton signed Presidential Proclamation six, 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 seven, declaring the second week of April as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, N P S T W. This week is a time to celebrate and thank telecommunications personnel across the nation who serve our communities, citizens and public safety personnel twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas on September tenth, twenty twenty, Governor Gavin Newsom signed into law Assembly Bill one nine four five, which recognizes the heroic work of public safety dispatchers by reclassifying them as first responders. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the first vital link for our law enforcement officers, firefighters and emergency medical responders by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunications of Trinity County have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires and treatment of patients. Whereas we commend all those who serve or have served in and throughout the public safety telecommunications profession this past year. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity do hereby proclaim the week of April nine through fifteen, twenty twenty-three as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, duly passed and adopted this fourth day of April, twenty twenty-three by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity. Before we um have a motion and a second, um is our under sheriff, who will be receiving our, our proclamation today. Would you come to the mic? Thank you. I should have asked you to do so sooner. I apologize. Thank you. Uh, so could I have a motion?
I move that we approve this.
I would say.
So a motion by Supervisor Lutwiler, second by Supervisor Gogan.
Supervisor Gogan.
Aye.
Supervisor Lutwiler.
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier.
Aye.
Chairman Cox.
Aye. So Under Sheriff Ward, thank you for um, on behalf of all those who serve and if you had some words?
I just want to say thank you for recognizing our employees and uh, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, moving into public comment. This time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda or within the consent calendar. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda. Is there public comment in the room?
Yeah, good morning, Madam Chair and Board. Um, so I just wanted to say that there are some really interesting topics and concepts raised by Mr. Hoosier's presentation and I've already discussed with Supervisor Cox, uh, the possibility that, uh, on behalf of the Bureau of Reclamation, I'm sorry, Mike Dixon with the U S Bureau of Reclamation. Um, I would be willing to come back and at a future board meeting and um, discuss how flow management decisions are made as far as releases to the Trinity River, as far as how reclamation is approaching the rebuilding of storage in Trinity Lake this year in light of the three previous years of drought. And specifically to address one of the topics that's been raised, um, at that Supervisor Cox just brought up again. That's that, uh, the Bureau of Reclamation is currently in the process of reconsulting on the long-term operation of the Central Valley Project under the Endangered Species Act. And Supervisor uh Gogan and Carpenter Harris both just got a quick update on that at the last Trinity Management Council meeting. But there is both a, in a Dangerous Species Act and a National Environmental Policy Act component of that reconsultation. And I should say that uh, it is very likely that the alternatives being considered will consider things, including uh, an increased uh, management goal for minimum storage at Trinity. So I'd, I'd be happy to bring up what the, the status of that reconsultation is and potential avenues for the county to engage in that process.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Hey, good morning, Chair and Supervisor. Thanks for the opportunity. Adrian Keyes from Hayfork, Trinity County Agriculture Alliance. Request today for a future agenda item for the supervisors to consider drafting a letter of support for Assembly Bill one, 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 authored by Assemblyperson Pellerin from the Santa Clara, Santa Cruz area. It basically picks up where the Assembly Bill twenty-six ninety-one let up, left off last year, creating a license type for cannabis cultivators that allows them to fulfill a temporary retail sales um, position at otherwise pre-existing regulated uh cannabis events. There is no bland use implications to the county. It doesn't increase access or increase any implications to public health and safety. These events already are taking place. It's simply an opportunity for a farm to sell direct to the consumers at these events. The one minor change made was the language about the previously was eight events would be a, a cap that cultivators could uh, could shoot for. There was um, a lot of conversation, a lot of discussion about this. And the fact of the matter is, is these events. You know, the maximum duration of one of these events is four days. I've never heard of when they lasted four days. They're commonly one or two days. And so there was a lot of negotiation between our state uh, Government Affairs Program through the Urgents Council and the author of the bill and the previous author who was Assemblyman Wood, um, to change that language to, to to recognize the number of days represented instead of events. So it, the language now reads that it would be thirty-two days of sales, whether that be one at a time or in a group of four. It equates to the same number, but it fits much more uh closely in with what's actually happening in, in events around the state. I have a draft letter of support. I've got all the, you know, the bill primer and the uh, final text of the language also that I'm happy to share. And I just would love to see this on the agenda as soon as possible. Ledge season, season is in high, um, I don't know, high effect right now. Lot happening, lot happening really fast. And there's a fair chance actually I'll be back in with some more letters of support that we're hoping to get signed and uh, see some positive changes, bring a lot of economic activity to the county, add a lot of sustainability to our farm operations by allowing cultivators to have this sort of direct access instead of having to go through the retail supply chain, being paid a wholesale rate instead of a retail rate. There's really um, in my opinion, this is one of the key components to sustain the um, the craft cannabis industry um throughout California, uh, all throughout the state. There are small farmers who would like to participate in this. And over the course of this last year, um, was Assembly Bill twenty-six ninety-one didn't quite make it into the trailer bill last year. There were still a lot of whoops, I see my time's up. I'll, I'll call myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Marie Peterson, District One. Um, I want to start by asking uh Chairperson Cox to agendize appointing a designee to sign off on fire safety plans for manufacturing licenses. We've been waiting for this for a long time and haven't seen any results. Currently there are people with um, conditional use permits that are unable to even submit a application for a manufacturing uh license due to the lack of a designee and the Weaverville Fire Chief refuses to participate. And he's actually the only other option besides a board designee written into the code. Uh, second, I wanted to touch on the um ordinance update process and how it's causing harm to many of our cultivators right now and preventing them from the ability to get a license issued and possibly be losing a second season in a row. Uh, there are many people who have submitted variance applications. Um, a lot of them have already had variances and might only need a variance from another cultivator's home. We're told by the um by the Cannabis Division that that, that the variance process is now on hold and nobody can get through that process or have their license issued if they need a variance. Uh, the problem with this is they've already paid for this, been waiting for months to hear about a um, hearing date. And we have a set of rules in place already to make this happen. Just putting things on hold such as the manufacturing applications and variances is really harmful and those aren't the only things that are being put on hold right now because of lack of action. I think the solution would be to um, you know, either give variance hearings. We only have one planning commission meeting a month at this point. We could add another one. Get through some of these variances or um, we could just have the variances renewed through director's use permit process, which is what used to happen in the past. I feel that our leaders owe it to the farmers to try to maintain some level of trust, which this is just another thing that's eroding the trust um for our, our leaders to be able to take care of these people. The last thing I wanted to mention is the loss of Skyler Fisher, our associate planner. Very devastating to the program. You know, there's wide talk through the community of um, the impact that Commissioner Sharp has had on her, how he made her cry. We've all seen it. He belittled her for months, um, made her cry multiple times. And I think this is a real leadership problem that we need to address. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Dana Ryan and I live in Weaverville. I'm going to jump around to a few subjects that just seem to be going through the community. Um, one is um, if you could be aware as a board, me and my partner have a claim that hopefully is on your desk um, for a county claim for the shooter that was taken out on one thirty-eight Forest Avenue for the damages. We're requesting uh reimbursement for the damages for the county bringing in whoever blew the building up, SWAT or who might, who it might be. Another uh, subject I have, I'm, I'm really offended by you guys just waiving the SEQA for the state for these electric worthless charging systems when I just paid over a hundred thousand dollars for mine. And I'd like to file a claim for that, but I'm not going to because I know it won't go anywhere. But you, you waive it for them and you, you put the community and people that want to develop through punishment for two years and a hundred thousand dollars of obviously it's not of much use because you're waiving it for the state. Another one, I'm, I'm a landlord and I've uh, evicted somebody and a department uh, from the county with initial C D B G dash C V ran by Susie Caulcombs. Come to the rescue of uh, a tenant when they really don't know uh, without communicating with the landlord of what they're issuing. They've issued me a check. I asked them not to issue the check. They did it anyhow. And they did it without really knowing what their job is. And they're, they're throwing frivolous money and I'm going to leave this check with you and the directions, if any of you have ever even read this of what that department does. I don't want the county money for this purpose. And I'm wondering how much more money is just going out and uh, people that would love to just pocket it. It's written in my name and I could cash it, but I will not do that. So the check will be left here on this counter. I'm, I'm sad for the Skyler Fisher leaving too. I don't know if it was because she was harmed from the last lady's statement and pushed around. I know she's been pushed around a little bit, but she was a huge benefit. And I, I don't know, uh, if you guys have tried to offer more money to keep her here. I think it's good thought. We can sell the big building that our last C A O talked us into. Get rid of that dinosaur with five to six employees in there and go back to the other place and maybe offer more funding where we can keep them. For our C A O, we've got our interim one that's filling in. Was the job offered to her? Or we just keep offering the job to people that are from out of the community that leave like the last one did with his entourage of crew. Wiped out the planning and left us in quite a mess. Last but not least, that by going to the SEQA, the, so buried into the pot industry, we've lost a grocery store, which is maybe coming back in again, another, another style. a grocery store, which is maybe coming back in again, another another style of it. But we got so buried into that that we're missing the taxes and stuff that could be paying the employees and give them a raise. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Tom Belenko, Douglas City. I was, I just realized on the radio today, I was six months old exactly when Martin Luther King was shot fifty-five years ago today. So that's not what I came here to talk about, but I do want to acknowledge that day and in the spirit of unity, I suppose. I did want to talk about the other economic driver that used to really drive this country and face a regulatory apocalypse, similar to cannabis, and that's timber. We all know the timber story, driven really out of business by regulation. And now in our annual firestorms, we have everybody say, oh, boy, can't we bring back timber? Timber can't come back the way it was. However, the regulatory structure that the state did put on top of timber, everybody, I think, is familiar with the Timber Harvest Plan. I think we've all heard of a less than three acre conversion. Those are like the two ends of the spectrum. In the middle there is a remedy for landowners called a non-industrial timber management plan. It's abbreviated NTMP. That applies to landowners of twenty-five hundred acres or less that are not primarily engaged in forest products, which say it doesn't apply to Sierra Pacific, but it would apply to me, for instance, or anybody with timberable land. And this comes up because I've spoken against this zoning of ag forest because it really, it makes no sense under the structure we have now because I have eighty acres. What can I do commercially with that to call that ag forest? However, if I had a timber, NTMP, what that does is it puts a lifetime plant, management plan, on the property. And then, as long as you log according to that plan, there's a ministerial environmental review, not an individual review each time. It's a notice of timber harvesting. Part of what problem came with the NTMP when when they started that, and they said, all right, you have to go through a CEQA review. CEQA reviews were a couple thousand dollars. Now, as we just heard, a CEQA review can cost a hundred thousand dollars. We learned something from cannabis. Rather than have every single person do their own CEQA review, we did a programmatic EIR. I think we could do a programmatic EIR for NTMPs. Obviously, there would be site-specific requirements for individual sites, biological resources, but I think it would be much more manageable. So I invite the board to look at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Rini Ryan, and I am a Weaverville resident. And I am just here for information or to give you guys information about a future presentation that I am going to be presenting, and it's about a beautification project for downtown Weaverville. Myself and my friend Danielle have reenacted the garden club. It used to be the Trinity Garden Club, and we're now the Weaverville Garden Club. We think there's a lot of beautification that can go on in Weaverville, and our project, our biggest project right now is going to be putting flower hanging baskets in downtown Weaverville. So I will be coming back in a couple weeks and presenting that to you. I just wanted to kind of put the bug in your ear and let you know that there's going to be a lot of great things happening, a lot of beautification projects happening down around.
Nice. Thank you. Any other public comment in the room? Okay, seeing none. Any on Zoom? Marilyn?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Marilyn Rennecker. I live near Hyampom on Lower South Fork Mountain Road, which has a slide at mile ten. And that slide has been there since January. There are seven people who live beyond the slide. I am eighty-four and am able to walk the quarter mile to my car. My neighbor is seventy-four. It's on oxygen, and we bring him food and supplies. PG&E and T-Pod have a power station beyond the slide. I have called the Department of Transportation several times, asking, what is the plan? What is the plan? And when is it going to be implemented? I have talked to local people who know how to fix things like this, and they say it's a day or two days' work. It's not rocket science. It's something that can be done by limited funds and by the amount, the equipment that the county has that you, it needs a culvert, it needs rock fill, and it needs a bank dug out. It's not that difficult. I have waited. I have waited for some response from the county and not gotten it. I have talked to Heidi Harris, who came out to look at it, and I thank her for doing that, but still have heard nothing about what kind of a plan the county has. And I have never, in my fifty years in the county, been so ignored by a county department as I have been by the Department of Transportation in this particular incident. And the fact that the Garrett Road issue is on the agenda is another reason that raises my suspicions about the competence of this department. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Patty? You're muted, Patty.
There we go. Are you hearing me now?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Okay, I'm just piggybacking on Marilyn's comments regarding Road Six there in Hyampom. We are also one of the neighbors that are beyond is beyond that slide. And we're very concerned because of the fire safety that it can present. We're not able to evacuate should any fires come from the northwest. In fact, we've had three fires in the last twenty years that have devastated our property. Well, two of them, two of the three. And the prevailing winds come from the northwest, in which they would go, our escape route would then be Road Six. So the evacuation for the residents up that way would be nonexistent. And it's, it would be, it's very concerning to us that that slide is there. I think a temporary fix is a good idea that Marilyn suggested, but I think you're going to be looking at a permanent fix. And I understand federal funds are available right now, and this is something the DOT should look into if he hasn't already. So I'd just like to see this on the agenda, and we get going on this, so that way we can get this taken care of by by summer months, by actually now, spring and summer. So please put this on your agenda, and let's get, let's get on this. Thank you.
Patty, thank you. I didn't catch your last name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Stokum, S-T-O-C-U-M. My husband, John, is a trustee on the property that we own.
Okay, thank you. Carla Avila?
Good afternoon, Chair Cox and Supervisors. This is Carla Avila from Hyampom. I just, I have a couple of different items I'd like to bring before the board. The first is I would like to support asking the board to please write a letter or sign a letter
AB eleven eleven one 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 that Mr. Keys spoke about earlier in open comment. I want to clarify that this um this is an extension of where we picked up, where we left off with AB twenty six ninety one last year. It does not allow anything to happen in the supply chain that is not already being licensed. You still have to have a licensed event. You have to have an event license to have a licensed event. But what it allows to do, which is the really critical purpose of this bill, is that it would allow a farm, a licensed farm, to for that one day get a special permit, an event retail permit, for being able to sell like a retailer at the event. So instead of getting the commodity farm price, and then a retailer gets to make the retail price at the at the event. The farmer would have the opportunity for thirty two days total in a year to participate as a retailer and direct retail their own farm product from a licensed event. Now, this does not mean they can just put it in their truck and bring it to the license. It still has to go through all the proper channels of the supply chain through distribution and be tested and packaged and everything according to the law. But it allows for farmer at the end of the supply chain to act as the retailer and retain some of that direct value of our craft product, which to very small farmers is an absolutely critical part of our business plan that currently is not a workable part of our state law and why this bill is so important to licensed operators in Trinity County. We did have your support last year on AB twenty six ninety one. The main change in this bill is that it counts by days rather than by events. So if there happens to be an event that takes place on a Saturday and a Sunday, for example, a two day event, each day counts as a day rather than counting by events. So it's a little more clear in the language there. And we think this is a really important bill for our community. So we hope you will support AB eleven eleven. I also want to just reiterate the concern about Lower South Fork Road and Hyam Palm. It is a matter of exits during fire. It is also one of the only other routes out of Hyam Palm if something were to happen to the Hyam Palm Road or Route ten road out that we normally use. There are quite a few neighbors on the other side of that slide, and it has split our community where we physically cannot reach each other or cannot reach them. So I really appreciate that that has been brought forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Veronica?
Good morning, Veronica Kelly Albies, Douglas City. I wanted to take an opportunity this morning to bring to the board's attention and just to put it out there that I've been a sideline cheerleader and a volunteer for a little over three and a half years to support the Golden Age Center and its mission to our community. The current board members are working volunteers. They don't just meet each month. They are part of the daily operations and ever turn the center to its mission of supporting area seniors. They have congregate meals on Tuesdays from twelve to twelve thirty with socializing till two. Today, they have an Easter egg hunt. They're doing bingo on the first and third Wednesday of each month from one to three P M. And they worked with, they've been working with community partners that helped bring the Golden Age Center from the brink of closure. They stayed alive during a pandemic and fought to bring meals to our most vulnerable group, seniors, partnering with the food bank and local restaurants along with Holiday Market, that they not only brought hot cooked meals four days a week, they also created the senior supply box program to fill any void of food insecurities for that any of our seniors might experience. The congregate area is now also open for group rentals. The volunteers of Golden Age Center in Blue Barn have been the lifeblood for success. Their participation in supporting the mission have absolutely changed lives. I encourage those looking for a volunteer opportunity to reach out to Golden Age Center in Blue Barn. And just remember that they have been there through it all. I've had the opportunity, like I said, for the last little over three years to volunteer. My husband, I I support him when he joined the board. And they have brought it back to what its mission is, serving seniors. But they've also embraced all age groups of our county and invite them in for meals and social time and events. And I think that was just something that was in their hearts. And I think that's what makes that community senior center work best. I believe that these efforts and partnerships and community members should be acknowledged and applauded for all they have done and that they continue to do. The Blue Barn is their main and source of income, and they have made it work. And on the darkest days that we have had in this county, that Golden Age Center came through for our seniors. And I just want to applaud them and their volunteers for that and encourage anybody interested in volunteering to go join them on this mission. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have no other raised hands and no shots. Right, that we will close public comment and move into reports and announcements. Item two point one, item one, report from department heads.
Good morning, Chair Cox.
Good morning.
Supervisors, C A O Hamilton. You know, I'd like to just take a second to to verify and validate exactly what Veronica just said. I thought that was an extremely well put comment. And it did help my mother in law, who is in her late seventies, during the middle of the pandemic when we were told as family members do not come over because she was so concerned for her health. So I really do appreciate what Veronica just said. What I would like to do is just give a quick general plan update. So we are currently in phase four. That is the community vision and guiding principles. This phase involves creating a solid vision and direction for the community plans and the general plan as a whole. We're looking at having another series of community workshops in May to identify community boundaries. And that is going to be very instrumental because a lot of people, they have, when you get down into the communities and you start talking community plans, you really think that it's going to be something really simple and all these things have already been decided on, you know, ad nauseam, and it actually hasn't. And so a lot of the community members, they kind of differ on where the community is beginning in. So we're going to be facing that and there's going to be some. It's kind of interesting, the technology that's going to be brought out is for these community plans when we start looking at the different boundaries where people can go onto the website and they can say, I think the boundary is here, I think the boundary is here. So it's going to be some overlays that are coming in here pretty quickly. But it'll be kind of nice because we need that really buttoned up before we can really get into what the community plans are going to say. They're going to be virtual. The meetings that we're going to have next month are going to be virtual to a degree. And so that's that was by request of the the people that attended the community workshops last year. And I think that's going to be instrumental in getting to a larger database out there collectively so that we can get more information put in the books. The draft background report has been available, has been made available on the website, which is really good. That's trinity twenty fifty dot com. You can go on there and review that and please provide comments. One of the questions I get asked is why is this such a lengthy project? You know, why does it take so long to do this? And it's because we really don't want anything to be missed. We really do want as many comments as possible on the different areas because that's how you know you got a complete project. And basically, this is the foundation for the phase that we're in right now. The next series of meetings that we're going to have are going to be a focus group, and that's going to be May second. And we're going to be specifically trying to hammer out the actual vision of the communities and of the general plan itself. We're currently in the process of establishing meeting place. Hopefully, it's going to be the same meeting place we used last time so we get some consistency. But we haven't received confirmation back yet. But I'll be I'll be briefing that when we get that tied down and ready to go. That's going to be on May second. The next step is we're going to be moving into the actual community plans and the general plan prep. That's going to be the next phase. And that's that's going to be, that's going to be where we take the community, the community reporting, all the information we've received. We worked into the draft documents, draft documents out there. We'll be incorporating more comments into that. And so now it will be, the next step is going to be finalizing those plans to actually be able to move forward with the community plans and the the foundation for the general plan as a whole. Also, I was asked, and I think this is very important, basically to gauge the interest of the supervisors in attending, maybe rotating through the supervisors on our community plan meetings that we have. Generally, they're on Thursdays at nine A M. And I don't know that I need a head nod or anything like that. But what I'll do is I'll send out a weekly invite. And if you want to attend, please do. And if you, you know, have something else going on that week, I'll just go to the next person. We'll just continue rotating through. And that's just more of a continuing, ongoing effort to keep everybody apprised. And so then if you want to update your own constituents, you can. And that will help eliminate, I think, some of the confusion where people wonder, you know, what's going on? Well, there's, believe me, there's, there's a lot of stuff going on with it, but it's not visible walking down the street type of information. But hopefully, we're going to be in a better place than we were ten years ago, fifteen years ago, you know, last year, as we move forward and get this thing wrapped up. There any questions?
Hi, thank you. A couple of things. One is, I recall when we had the general plan presentation, supervisors were going to be contacted for suggested locations in their areas where people who don't have access to Zoom or whatever virtual method we're going to use could meet. And that location would have those capabilities. So I I know I haven't had anybody reach out to me. Is that something that's still to happen?
Yes, absolutely. All we're trying to do is be as inclusive as possible. So that will definitely happen. And I'll I'll double check on why you haven't received anything on that.
Okay. I just said, and maybe everybody else has already presented something, but I think we just need to be kind of requested that information. And again, my understanding was places that people could come together, they wouldn't be virtual in that sense, but they would be accessing the virtual capabilities that they don't have at home. You mentioned a May second focus group for vision. Who is the audience?
That's the focus group participants. So when we had the original, the original meetings last year, we had a technical advisory committee. So we all assembled down at the Rancheria right here in Leaverville, and it became to be such a large group that what we did was break that up into technical advisory committee members, which are basically county employees, and then the focus group members, which are members of the public, so members of the public at large. So the members of the public that are a part of those focus groups will actually be meeting on May second. And all the invites have already gone out. And so we're hoping we have a good turnout.
And and those folks were appointed by the last board? Or how did how did how did these people get selected? That's, I guess that's what I'm wondering.
Well, basically, it was just requested anyone who wanted to participate, they could participate. So, you know, there's no, there's no parameters where some people can, some people can't. But at that point last year, all we did was say who would like to participate. So anybody that wanted to could, and nobody, nobody was turned away. And so that's why we we had to break it into two groups, the TAC groups and the focus groups. So the focus groups are going to look at the the background report first, and then it's going to go to the TAC groups after, you know, some more comments are are added, combined with the comments that we're already receiving.
Okay. And do you give me an idea of how many people is in that focus group?
Well, what we're actually looking for is five to seven for each particular area.
Okay.
So and it was dramatically more than that at the last meeting, which is why we had to kind of differentiate some. So the focus groups are definitely valuable. And what we want is people to, people to communicate, get their, you know, the groups that they're involved with or whatever their ideologies are to the table so that we can kind of vet through those. You know, we, again, it's just about being inclusive. We want as many comments as possible over the next year or so. You know, it's going to be vitally important that we don't miss any particular group or location, their input, so that we make this thing as sound as it can be. I mean, we want it to go through twenty fifty before it gets updated again.
Yeah. And so this focus groups will be giving their input on what the vision for the county should be? That, am I understanding that correctly?
The vision for the for the community plans.
Vision for the community plan.
And the general plan as a whole. And then all those comments will be added into the comments that we already have. And then it goes to the technical advisory committee, which will be paring those down and kind of making, you know, exclamation points out of the comments.
Okay. And then at some point, that then comes to the board, like the last thing that you guys brought before, then the board ends up reviewing what is put forward.
Right, exactly. And so before we go into phase five or as we're going into phase five, when all these things have actually been streamlined and put into position, you will have another general plan update team presentation that will come here and actually give you all the ins and outs of what they received, how they compiled it. You know, all the good stuff, basically.
Okay. And how and when is the board going to be engaged to choose which communities are going to be included in the new plans?
As far as the community plans?
Right.
But I mean, because it's every community in the in the county that's going to be included.
Not for a community plan?
Right, the community plans will be, the the five most populous areas are going to have their own community plans, which is the one that already exists. And then the other areas are going to be regionalized so that they will have their own community plan. Nobody's going to be left out.
Then I'm confused because at the presentation, there was a list of potential areas that could be added, but we needed to choose five. And my understanding was that the board was in some way going to be engaged to decide which additional five. Because we have the five existing, those are going to be updated. Then there was going to be, there was funding to provide for five more. And the board was going to be engaged on helping to choose. So that was done as fairly as we can do that as a board. So that's where I left off with my understanding unless I misunderstood.
Right, and I'm thinking that is a misunderstanding because there's ten overall plans. All of this has already been budgeted last year. And so it's going to be which ones are actually going to be standalone plans instead of regional plans. That is maybe where input would be decided. Like, for instance, if you have a geographically separated location like Hyam Palm, for instance, it might need its own general plan and not be lumped in with Mad River, Hetten Shaw, Xenia, Ketten Palm. So they may actually want their own plan. So in my understanding, that's more of what they were looking for instead of not developing ten plans. My understanding is it's ten plans, five are going to be solid, and then five will be regional. So if any group beyond that changes beyond those regional plans, that was my understanding. And I mean, I can check on that and, you know, find out if something has changed. But that was my understanding. I mean, that's, that was when we originally moved the money from one budgeting area to another budgeting area last year, that was for the ten plans.
I I get the ten plans. I just thought there was a decision still to be made. And if it's not, then I would like to see the decision that has been made again because I didn't understand it the way you're presenting it.
Okay.
It was not clear that it's already been determined who's in regional plans, who gets five distinct new plans. So I just like that clarity.
Okay. Well, if you'd like, you can be the first member to come on Thursday if you're available at Thursday at nine, and then we can just ask that question immediately.
Well, I I would imagine everybody wants the information. Because that, where we left off in the last presentation, it was specifically stated that they would come back to us. So that's why I'm confused. And then the last part is also during that meeting, I raised the concern that we we were on budget, which was great. We were behind timelines. We had all the description of the phases, but we didn't have timelines for those phases. So that was going to be another deliverable. So can you follow with the team and get that for us?
I definitely can. I did not have that this morning.
Thanks.
Other questions?
Yeah, so the additional five that we're talking about, would they be captured or accumulated by similar ways that the census made designated sensitive areas? We'll call like the pines, isn't, isn't Hayford or Hyam Palm? But there was four, five or six areas that were considered. I forget what the designation was during the census twenty twenty that were big enough to be their own population, their own hub, we'll say. Is there a way that we can go back and maybe look at some of those communities and and use those as as the the alternate five hubs outside there?
You know, I would say absolutely. I don't think anything is set in stone. And this is the phase that we're determining this in right now. So this is when all these things are going to be hammered out and actually decided upon. So it's which regional plans would actually be part of regional plans and which standalones would be part of standalones. So if we did look at the thirty one hundred or some odd folks that were in Trinity Pines, you would look at it and say, well, that was the second most populous area in the county. Why wouldn't it have its own standalone plan? So I mean, those kind, that's the phase we're in right now is determining all that.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Other department heads in the room? Hey, seeing none. Any on Zoom? Drew Poboni. Good morning, Drew.
Good morning, Chair, Supervisors, Drew Poboni, Trinity County Planning Department Cannabis Division Director. Just a quick licensing stats update for you all. Just want to let you know that we have now issued, or last week, we issued our one hundredth license. So although we may be some months behind where we had hoped, you know, to see that happen late last year, that is a bit of a milestone for us. And we have, as of this week, we will have one hundred and sixty one SEQA documents noticed in the paper for license for, for the license approval process. And I think that's, that's pretty much all I have to share for today.
Okay, thank you. I have no other raised hands, no shots. All right, we'll move on to report from County Administrative Officer.
Good morning, Chair and members of the board. We'll start with something lighthearted and fun. I'll pass to you a a letter that we received in the admin office from a nine year old that is doing a report on Trinity County. We did provide a copy of this to the visitor center who has, who typically receives these and has a packet prepared that is ready to send out. However, if you want to add something from your district for him, here's his address. That's just fun. And he's a student from San Bernardino. That's great that they're exploring Northern California. I wanted to give a thank you to Sean Cameron, our attorney with Prentice Long, and Lisa McNeely with the Road Department and just assisting tirelessly over the last two weeks in working with the Department of State Public Works in completing our sublease for the jail. And it was a big lift, and it was nice to send all that off to the state yesterday. I'm working on just fine tuning some onboarding for our new C A O that will be coming on in two weeks tomorrow. I am counting and excited to have him when he's here. We want that to be a seamless transition, and he will be joining us tomorrow at our department heads meeting for a brief meet and greet with department heads. So looking forward to that. Also, at our department head meeting is a continuous conversation on our strategic plan, which I know Supervisor Luke Wyler will be reporting on for the ad hoc. But there's engagement with county department heads and looking forward to seeing that come to completion in presentation to our new C A O. Craig Goodman did join us for three days last week working with department heads on our fee schedule and so that is moving forward with the timeline we had established for updating another round for our ordinance. So I'm pleased with that progress. And then for human resources, just giving a quick update that we have thirty two open recruitments. Three of those are extra help. So it's twenty nine open recruitments for approximately thirty seven positions in total. And, you know, we're just continue to put the word out and receive applications.
So that was for a specific area of the county or that was for everybody?
For all, all county departments.
Twenty nine open recruitments for thirty seven open positions.
Correct.
Thank you.
And that does include H H S.
Correct.
And that's the end of my report. Okay, thank you. All right, reports from board, supervisors. Supervisor Fraser, would you like to begin?
Sure. I was not able to attend the Colusa Glen Trinity Community Action Partnership Meeting on Wednesday. I tried to. When I left home, there was a power line hanging across the road about a mile from my house that I couldn't get past. So I wasn't able to attend that meeting, and I had no other reportable actions this past couple of weeks.
Great. Thank you, Supervisor Luke Wyler.
Okay. Yeah, so just, I think I may have covered this last time, but just to formally conclude that my role in as a staff liaison or a board liaison to the Staff Committee for Cannabis Financials ended with the last board meeting. Was able to complete the appeals training that I was sent as homework, which was interesting and informative. Working with Liz on the C A O onboarding plan, and I want to congratulate and thank Liz for pulling together a very comprehensive onboarding process for the new C A O. I think it will really help to make sure that his time is used efficiently, productively, and that he will get on board much more effectively because of her work. So thank you for that. Snow maintenance for volunteer fire departments is on the agenda today. Happy to see that. Frontier Communications continue to hear about people having trouble. We reached, I reached out to the C E O several times over the last two weeks due to ongoing problems. And I'm also aware of matter being escalated to Senator McGuire's office just because it's, you know, people are responding three and four times. They get a ticket, the ticket get closed, but nothing's done. And so it's just a horrendous problem that has left people stranded, if you will, from a communication standpoint. So I think Office of Emergency Services is being extremely diligent, thank you, Philip, in helping with that. And we're just trying every base to try to get to it. Sierra Nevada Conservancy, as the primary representative for that that we established in the last few weeks, I guess, I did finally receive some onboarding information and learning more about how this all works. But they apparently take the board members that get assigned and they put them into different roles. And my role will be advisory, so I won't be on the board. I will be in an advisory role that can provide input, but I'm not a board member on that. So it just was a learning process for me, and I'll continue to learn more about that program. And I have a meeting set up to dig in a little bit deeper so I can better understand even in an advisory role, what can I do on behalf of Trinity County in that role? C S A C, this has been mentioned before, but we have legislative conference and the C S A C board meeting next week. Wow, okay. And I do think that we, you know, we heard from Mike Dixon about potentially a Trinity River Restoration Program presentation. I actually heard from some people this week who reached out to me with concerns about the financial impact of the renew release schedule. So I think it could be, I heard from people that have concerns about the financial impact of the new release schedule. Basically, it's it's in the context of with so much more water coming down during the prime fishing season, many, many fishing trips are being canceled, which means people aren't in our hotels, they aren't in our restaurants, aren't in our grocery stores, gas store, all that stuff. And so I I just, rather than that be anecdotal, I just think that would be a good presentation for us to hear so that we, you know, we hear about the science and so forth from river restoration. We hear about the economic side from P U D. And I think this more close to home, local business type impacts would be also informative for us to know so that when we are representing our constituents, we have that information.
Thank you.
That's it.
So I think if anything, I would ask if our water ad hoc would like to look into, I had mentioned to Supervisor Gogan the same thing that I posed the question to P U D General Manager. And then following that, Mike Dixon said he could certainly speak to this and looking to agendize him for a presentation for next week to kind of get that NEPA question answered. So there might not be something further to look into until we hear his presentation. But if we could also look into, I just want to have a complete conversation about all things water. And this local impact would be something that we can find folks that want it. I would say not individuals to come, but collectively share. Might be something you guys would like to add to your radar. Okay. I will pass the torch to you Supervisor Gogan for your report.
So just to touch on what Rick said with the increased flows and the economic decrease, we'll say to Trinity County, general opener for trout season has historically been the middle of April, which we're quickly approaching. And the flows will be too high this year in the opportunity for suitable fishing. So there will be some economic deterioration, we'll say, in Trinity County because of that. Historically, pretty popular time to come here. A lot of people plan some other open day fishing trips around that. So that's, I guess, one of the implications, not good or bad, just one of them. I did have on the same topic, myself and Heidi participated in a two-day TMC meeting virtually, Wednesday and Thursday last week. And a little bit off the subject of that meeting, there was an unusual amount of participation from the public at that, at that meeting. We generally have maybe 15 or 20 people participate in the meeting and it's generally the same 15 or 20 people. This, this time around, we had, I think, one day we had 50 or something. Yeah, I mean, it was, I will say, I've been doing the TMC thing and TR, and the TRP thing for a while. By far, the, the most people, the most input from the general public that we've had, which was really, really good to see. I know a lot of the TMC stuff and the acronyms that we use and and all those meetings are tough to follow, but it was, it was kind of inspiring to see people really join the meeting, ask questions about the lake level, the releases, you know, basically what, what does restoration do? And all those things are, are important that the general public understands what's going on out here with the fishery and, and the waters. And another thing that I would mention, and I see Josh is here, but the Trinity Journal, the last two or three articles has had a quarter page ad in it for people of Trinity County to put their input in on how they feel that the river is doing in the last 50 years or so. Is it, is it getting better, worse? What they see, what they feel? It's not aimed towards restoration or anything in particular. It's just how do they feel, what can be done better, what do they, what they think is going on? I think that will open up a lot of discussion for, I don't want to use the term layperson, but the average person to get a perspective on the myriad things that happen with restoration, TMC, TRP. It's a lot of stuff, but it's good to see that participation. So back to the meeting, we had a couple of votes. The first day they voted on approving the science portion of the program document, which I was part of for a year plus. In fact, I was the only non-scientist in that scientific group. But we did come to a program, a good document, I think, that will guide the science process for TRP in the future. It was a rigorous process that took a year plus of, you know, once a month, full day meetings. I'm glad we got it done. They're still working on the, the Word document of this and I hope that gets done soon. So we voted to put that plan forward and we will put it forward. On the second day, there was a vote to change the TMC bylaws and the bylaws that they were proposing to change was the voting structure of the TMC, which for, for quite a while now has been a, there's eight participants in TMC and the voting structure was two noes, six yeses, the motion fails. The bylaws were going to be changed to two noes, six yeses, the motion passes. That failed to pass, so the bylaws in the voting process will stay the same as it was, a super majority, that any two dissenting votes will kill a motion. And it will stay that way, I guess, for the foreseeable future. And a little side note, it's not little, there was about $66 million set aside for the hatchery infrastructure from the state, which is unbelievable, you know, God's done for us. We needed it badly. Our hatchery is disintegrating kind of under our feet, so that 66 million will be greatly appreciated and certainly needed. So that's my presentation.
Thank you. Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Hello, thank you. Great job on the TMC report. I'll just leave that there. Okay, I just want to say I took the time to run down to Hyam Palm to, to stand with and look with my own eyes at the Lower South Fork Road situation and then again at the Garrett Road. And during that time, visiting with the community members, it was just a continual reinforcement that both of these roads are having a holistic impact on the community at large. The folks that are on the Lower South Fork Road are struggling as winter continues to bring in cold, cold storms. Having firewood delivered to their home is impossible right now. They're struggling with getting their propane refilled. And then little things that make communities whole and function almost like families, especially down in the Hyam Palm area, their celebrations for Easter and other things have had to be set back because of the situation with, with the road there on the Lower South Fork. Then continued over to the Garrett Road community, met with quite a number of people there on the roadside. It was a great turnout. We had a long conversation in the freezing rain, but we all survived. And the impact on the vets' ability to service its community that comes from miles around was, was a deep concern. And then just the confusion and the problems with the, I guess, let me think of the right word. There's just, there's a, a deep rift, I would say, between the county's report that after the 1.4 miles on Garrett Road is not, is not ours versus what the community understands to be, to be the truth there. So we need to, to work on that and I hope that's settled some today. But it is definitely a holistic impact to the community in all ways. And then also, along with Lutwiler, Frontier is still wreaking havoc in my district with folks not having landlines for an extended period of time. I've continued to reach out to the company. I have continued to ask Wood and McGuire. I'm grateful for our OES department pushing on anyone we can think of. I, maybe perhaps we should have a conversation to maybe ask our county council to write them a letter that says we are, we are deeply concerned about the services that are not being provided as we are still continuing to have problems with dispatchability and lives are being put at risk and in jeopardy because dispatches are not making it to Western County for the volunteer fire department, both in Hawkins Bar and Sawyer. So we have had missed calls. We had had, we have had calls that fortunately dispatch is now calling the chief on his cell phone that works through his wifi. So just to try to get people to those emergency scenarios.
I'm going to interrupt you for a second. Council, is that something, what would that look like?
I'd have to get more details about specifically what it is, but it would, it would have to come to you obviously.
Could you use your mic?
Oh, sorry.
Thanks.
So they'd have to get more details on it to put that in there, but it would probably look like, you know, trying to work collaboratively with them to, to find some solution to that, you know, first go around. You don't want to start off too aggressive right away, but we probably need to figure out what the actual problem is.
Okay, and I'm just going to ask the board collectively, is that something that we would like to give direction for her to look into? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Another situation that seems to be plaguing our communities as a whole, but I've been hearing significant reports from the folks that live in my district is the difficulty with maintaining and keeping our homeowner's insurance. I spoke at length with some of the brokers that service the western area and they are, their hands are up in the air. There's, there's literally, in some cases, no ability for people to get homeowner's insurance that they can afford. We have senior citizens who are being asked to take their decks down, redo their roof, paint their house, different things that they can't physically afford all at one time. And then for those that have done it, insurance has, has, has been pulled anyway. And so people are being forced into, one of my quotes on my personal land was $30,000 a year. My personal homeowner's insurance increased by 10,000, up to $10,000 this year is what I am paying and that's the only option. And so I started speaking with others and I spoke with some of our local real estate agents and homes are falling out of escrow and, and sales are not being made. I spoke with Trinity County Title briefly, just personally, and they're recognizing that as well. So we are in a situation in our county with, with this insurance. It's not only impacting individuals, but our local volunteer fire departments are also being impacted by not being able to have good, solid insurance and then also not being able to pay for it. So my hope would be that we could, as a board, address this issue in some way by, by reaching out to the, our California Insurance Commissioner and talking to them and letting them know that we have some deep concerns here. Our communities are going to be at risk of people's homes being foreclosed on because when you have a mortgage, you have to have insurance. And so if they can't afford it, then they'll, they'll be in breach of, of their ability to keep their mortgages. So this is a real big deal. It's something that I, I want to put some force behind.
I'll show you again. Let's figure out how we're going to deal with this. Do we need an ad hoc of one who will create a letter to bring to the board? Would you like a second supervisor to work with you on that? What do we need to take an action step?
I'm willing to, to work hard on this for the people. I don't know, I know probably the other supervisors are experiencing these things in their districts as well. So if anybody else has a passion for this, I would be more than happy to, to, to partner with, with anyone who wants to fight this.
And do we have somebody that you would like to?
Okay, that's great. I think it's something we need to jump on quick. And then in addition, something lighthearted and fun, I provided a letter in support of the community center that is being, funds are still continuing to be raised in Dream Quest, which is located in Willow Creek, but most of our western county kids from Burt Ranch all the way downriver go into Willow Creek and participate with the Dream Quest youth classes and opportunities that they have. And building that community center for the kids is going to be a really, really good input, input for western Trinity County youth. So that's my last week.
Thank you.
I have a question for you.
Okay.
When you had your insurance rates raised, you went from, we'll say, private insured to the Cal safe, whatever.
So our insurance was, was dropped several years ago by our previous carrier and we were, we were, the only insurance we now have available to us is California Fair Plan. And then we have to have an additional insurance to cover liability and the, and our belongings.
So the California Fair Plan, I think in both situations, flood and fire, only protects you in a flood or a fire situation?
Yes, it's fairly restricted and the costs are, are growing increasingly. So I know that this, and it's not, this is not just my story. I'm sure probably everyone out in the audience can attest to insurance issues over the last several years.
Yeah.
End of report.
All right, my board report. On March 31st, I met with Congressman LaMalfa's District Representative Brenda Haynes. My goal in this is to cross the district line and collaborate in any way that we can. And I wanted to obviously be a give-take. I had looked into, Congressman LaMalfa has some legislation in process at this time. It is an act that provides a clean water exemption so that federal, state, local, and tribal firefighting agencies can continue to use fire retardant as necessary because there is a push out there to limit or eliminate that as a tool in the toolbox. She very much appreciated the offer. It had actually not occurred to her to reach across a district line for letters of support. And she will need those in the future, so I will be bringing that to the board for consideration at the next meeting. She also asked that I forward that to any other local agencies that may wish to partner with such a letter. So I have forwarded her request to the Fire Chiefs and the Fire Safe Council. My ask of her was to find out if there were ways by which Congressman LaMalfa could partner with our need for PELT funding to be something that is restored to levels that we used to receive in Trinity County. She was quite unfamiliar, so I am helping to gather for her information on just historically, the means by which those funds have been calculated in the past, percentages that have been allocated to schools and roads. The recent 4.8 million that we received is also a PELT payment in lieu of taxes is what the acronym stands for. Payment, that one was determined by population, which is different than what historically it has been. So that conversation continues and as I shared with you last time, this is something that RCRC is working hard with their legislative actions to really go to bat for us. And the bottom line, if you don't understand what that is, we live on 77% federally owned land. And so basically, it's the Forest Service needing to pay their property tax, just like the rest of us pay ours. And my personal opinion, if you're not going to pay your property tax, then sell your property so that somebody else can pay the property tax because we have no other funding revenue and we desperately need those dollars. I have no other out of county travel to report. Moving into the reports from the ad hocks, I just want to give a little bit of clarity, so I've just added yet another ad hoc and I'll probably create a slide on this so we can all keep up to speed, but I have a template. I am still the ad hoc of one established by Chair Fraser and I believe it was November of '22, just as support for the Good Neighbor Authority that is happening, which I will give a report out on. That terminates when the Good Neighbor Authority is finalized. And then the ad hocks that I've created, on January 3rd, I created one tasking Supervisor Lutwiler to assist with the cannabis budget history and projections by quarter over a three-year period. That lasted two weeks because what I really wanted was a staff committee. So with understanding, we terminated that, turned it into a staff committee. That objective was achieved and that terminated on March 17th. Then I formed a, an ad hoc of Supervisor Lutwiler and myself to move the strategic plan forward until such a time that our new CAO is on boarded and assumes that responsibility. And so that will terminate here in a couple of weeks. And I compliment Supervisor Lutwiler for his plans. He's been the driving force behind that. I've been more observing the process and am really pleased with what he has been able to achieve and the staff members who have jumped on and done some really hard work. Then on February 7th, I created an ad hoc of Supervisors Gogan and Carpenter Harris regarding in brevity, all things Trinity County water. And if you want to look back and I have that verbiage if anybody needs it, it's quite lengthy to be very specific as to what that entails. And that terminates with the end of my chairmanship at the end of December. On February 22nd, created an ad hoc of Supervisors Fraser and Lutwiler regarding a cannabis ordinance update that is needed. That ordinance needs to be created to take advantage of kind of a limited window that we have with an offering by the state, that we can offer an expanded license type that we want to take advantage of. That ad hoc terminates once that ordinance is complete. On March 7th, created an ad hoc of Supervisor Lutwiler and myself. And really that was just to bring clarity because he and I had been working on economic development activities and I wanted that to just have transparency before everyone, that that was a passion of ours. We gave a thorough update on that last week. It also includes, it's just kind of a subcaption, conversations with our TOT recipient partners. And I'll have a little report on that. And so then today, oh, let's back up. That economic development concludes again at the end of this year. And then today, I'm forming, this will be a very limited time, but really important to put some focused effort. So Carpenter, Supervisor Carpenter Harris and Supervisor Lutwiler will work together to formulate a letter to come before the board, I hope by the next meeting, if you're able to do so, for the board's consideration and approval, that we will so. Um, for the board's consideration and approval, that we will um, adopt and send to Insurance Commissioner Laura, expressing um, our desperate need of uh, some attention in the matter of our uh, homeowners insurance policies and what that's causing this result. So that's a recap of, of the ad hocks generally. Uh, so my report for the Good Neighbor Authority. Um, Department of Transportation staff, David Colbeck and Lisa McNeely, uh, solved some administrative issues that existed, after which the Good Neighbor Authority Master Agreement was sent to U S Forest Service Grants and Agreements Specialists for review on March thirty first. That's a really positive step. I feel like we should have a little party. The Forest Service and the Department of Transportation Staff are developing a supplemental project agreement. So that is uh, S P A, and you'll hear it dubbed as a SPA as a thing. It's a supplemental project agreement, and that's really what holds the money for specific projects that then are uh, submitted and, and approved. So while only one SPA will be submitted for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year, other spas can be drafted and submitted throughout the term of the Good Neighbor Authority Agreement. While the SPA is still being drafted, one component of note is a line item allowing for the Forest Service to use the Trinity County Department of Transportation's Bailey Bridge to assist with uh, the Monument Fire Response. So a Bailey Bridge is a, it's a type of a portable, prefabricated truss bridge that has a modular component um, part, has multiple modular component parts that can be transported and erected with limited heavy equipment. So our D O T has used its eighty-foot Bailey Bridge for temporary road detours since the late nineteen nineties. And so um, that is something that we can allow the Forest Service use of within that spa. And uh, then other spa line items are in development as well. That's the end of the Good Neighbor Authority Update Report, unless uh, David, did you have anything to add to that? Okay, great. All right, moving on to a strategic plan report, Supervisor Lou Weller.
Yes, thank you. So as you said, work continues. So we had a good meeting this last week, uh, working through the details of the planned components and trying to make sure we're in alignment on what the right kind of input to that looks like. And I was able to review that, uh, our approach, if you will, with our incoming C O, Trent Tuthill, so that if we had some changes that he'd like to see, we could adapt those uh, early on, but he was comfortable with what we were doing. And we have a tentative meeting scheduled on April twenty eighth for um, somewhat of a, it will be a working session, but it will also be at least my handoff. Uh, at that point, then I will be saying, okay, I'm, I'm out of your hair. Uh, it's yours to take and own, and the team is um, there's been some really, really good work done. Um, and I think the main thing for people to understand is what the team is working on is very specific action plans to make what we put in the strategic plan actually a reality. Because before we had, here's what we want to accomplish by when. This says, how are we going to do it? When will we start? When will we finish? What's it going to look like? How will we measure success? So it, it's the, actually makes it a living, breathing document instead of something we just approve and put on the shelf.
Great. Thank you for that. Um, any update from our water ad hoc?
No, just two days on the T M C.
Right. So we're still, we were put together to deal with the um, well, all things Trinity County water and the fifty thousand acre feet um, with Humboldt County. I think that we, when we brought in Michael Jackson a month or so ago to talk to us about that, um, he had certain opinions. Since then, I've found other opinions that may be valid. Um, so as of now, we have not gone forward with any, anything at all um, with Humboldt County. I don't know if we're on, on, on really stable ground as far as getting that, that water. Certainly we'll keep on trying, but uh, it's going to take a lot of discussion um, between myself, yeah, Heidi, and our uncut, our oncoming C O, Trent Tuthill. And I think we'll come up with a good way to move forward, the best way to move forward for the county and uh, we'll put that into action. But it's going to take a while. There's, there's a lot to this, and uh, it, it'll take us quite a long time to get this completed.
Right. And, and for clarity, it, it is a huge topic. It isn't something that's expected that they're going to work magic overnight. So it's just that opportunity for updates at each meeting, and it's completely understood that there may be um, meetings where there just isn't anything to report out, which is also fair. All right, moving on to our cannabis ordinance. Um, do we have an update?
Sure. Uh, Supervisor Frazier, I had to step out real briefly, so I'll do this. So the uh, meeting, the committee meets uh, currently every Friday for a couple of hours. And what we are doing is actually going through the details of the various ordinances and what sort of updates we believe should be proposed to the board. And it's inclusive of all the various ordinances that are in place, including any additions such as Chair Cox mentioned. Uh, so Supervisor Frazier and members of the cannabis staff, and then sometimes the consultants that we've hired to work with us, all participate in that. The cannabis division uh, last week posted on their website a summary statement about what is the scope of this work that we're doing. We're trying to have real clarity and transparency. Uh, so they described that. They put out some frequently asked questions and responses to those. They also put out a new email address that is there to help encourage people to, if you have input regarding what you'd like to see addressed during the cannabis ordinance update process, use this email. And what happens is when you use that email, it automatically gets sent to every participant of the ad hoc committee. So we all see it simultaneously. We know what we're supposed to be working on. Um, but it's also stored in one central place so that we don't lose sight of it. And it's just our way of trying to keep that process very open, very transparent, and get input early in the process if we can. Uh, and then we will follow that with, once it's ready, then there will be two public workshops where we will invite the public, um, share the, the ordinance proposals. And uh, we're trying to do that again in a very transparent way. So if you're familiar with things like Word documents where you can track changes and show what you've lined out and show what you've added, we're trying to make it that way, which looks messy, but it makes it really clear what's being changed. So that's what we're trying to do um, to maintain as much transparency. Um, you can go on the website for this, but cannabis. dot ordinance at trinitycounty.org. And anybody can use that, send input that they would like to be considered by the ad hoc committee that is currently working on this ordinance update.
Nice. Thank you.
Anything else, Dan?
Uh, I would add to that, if you do send emails to that address, if you would like a specific response, you're probably going to be better off to reach out to either Supervisor Lou Weller or I on our supervisor email, because we're not going to be responding to every email that comes into that. Um, that's, it's more of an information thing. So if you have a question that you would like to have answered, don't use that email for that. That's more of a, a input email than a, a question email. Um, the other thing that did come up in our last ad hoc um, is some cannabis staff have asked that we maybe increase the scope slightly of this ad hoc, to go beyond just ordinance changes, so they can bounce stuff off of us in questions like we heard earlier with the fire plan. And, and how can we address that? So that's something I told them I would bring up to the chairperson. And if that's your desire, you could um, increase the scope of the cannabis ordinance ad hoc to be basically just a cannabis ad hoc, so we could discuss uh, more cannabis-related stuff that the staff would like to bring before us.
So I, I'm amiable to that. The only thing I would want is to be really clear on what is the objective, so that we can understand when we have met the objective.
And to me, the objective would be uh, basically, it would be a supporting role, so staff could ask questions of us and see what our take is, and if we can help them in any way to, to answer these questions that are coming up as, and some of it, I think that is tied in with the ordinance updates, because a lot of this is going to be addressed in the ordinance, but it's, it's more of a question of, is this an ordinance update or more? Uh, it was, it was, there was a question if we were overstepping our boundary by talking about, well, we need to address this. And we could make it part of the ordinance, but does it need to be? And so just a freedom to discuss things to, that may be outside the scope, but we don't want to, we don't want to get into an area that isn't covered by our ad hoc. And some of it might go into the ordinance update, some of it may not. Some of it may be administrative cleanup that we don't need to.
But from a timing standpoint, Chair, I, I believe we could still say it ends when the ordinance is presented and whatever form approved by the board. So it, it wouldn't go beyond that unless they requested something else.
Okay, I would just say that what I would appreciate is, uh, yes, because what we want to do is serve staff in a way that gets work done, that clearly needs to be done and that people are asking for. Along with that, on a parallel track, we want to be completely transparent about all things that we do. So I guess what my ask would be, in this general yes, would be like you've said today, as was posed in public comment, we need to address, and I've already sent a letter to um, Chrissy Anderson, asking uh, for her to give further clarity, because we had touched on that once before. Um, that when those pieces come up, feel free to answer them, but bring them here so that we can know what those pieces are that are asking to be touched on. Is that fair?
Yes, and it would be, uh, most of it, I think, would be covered in a report out. And if there was anything that, that, that staff brought to us that we felt as our two-member ad hoc needed to be addressed by the board as a whole, then we would bring that to you to be agendized to, to make a decision. It's just the, this, those kind of questions can be, can be answered somewhat uh, at the ad hoc level. Like, do we think this needs to go before the whole board? We can, we can help out there.
So right now, the scope just includes this uh, fire uh, safety review.
It would just, well, there's, there's other things could come up. I would just say to make the scope cannabis related, you know, so the, the cannabis department can use us as a sounding board, if that's what it is, or to, to help them to work through some of these issues, just to be able to, to exchange ideas and then try to make process, progress moving forward in this process.
And I, I would just add, I, I think for, if it helps with clarification, there, part of the reason for the update is that there's inconsistencies and, and lack of clarity, you know, some grayness, and that's what we're trying to address in the updates. So as those things come up, they're coming up in practical examples, and they're looking for us to help them kind of, you know, let us weigh in on that to the extent that two members have, you know, any weight to weigh in, but it's at least informative to them. And, and those are the kinds of things. And when they came up, we, us trying to adhere very strictly to what we were authorized to do, we said, hmm, let's ask for that approval, and then we'll engage with you that. So it is, I, I think as Supervisor Frazier said, it's very related to the cannabis updates process, but they are specific things that help form whether we make, as, as you said, need to make changes in the ordinance or not, or if we just need to clarify our process.
So I would just say that I really appreciate how cautious you're being to stay within the boundaries of, you know, what, what's Brown Act compliant, what's within the assigned ad hoc. And I feel really comfortable that, that you're doing so, and what you're bringing to us is just an example of how you are being careful and transparent in that way. And um, unless there's any other comments or concerns, I feel comfortable. All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Good. All right, um, I can, one more uh, ad hoc update, and we're going to take a little break. Uh, economic development, this will be quick. On Thursday, April sixth, we have a meeting set up with our T O T partners uh, who have, the partners who have been historically recipients of portions of the T O T funding that do come into the general fund in that way. Uh, we're going to meet to discuss kind of a proposed vision for some unification. Um, particularly important at this time before our budget requests are considered, and so that happens Thursday, and that is um, my update. We also are still waiting to hear back from Bob Burris, who is our R C R C um, Economic Development Deputy Director. Um, that's his staff position through R C R C. And his word to me was, I, I really care about what you guys are going through, and I want to create a little plan for you. He's enormously busy. And um, so I'm giving him a little bit of space. I don't want to push too hard, because I'm really asking for kind of a lot. And appreciative that he, he really does care and wants to give that. So I am anxious to hear about that, and we certainly will report out when we receive that back. That's what I have.
And, and I would just say, uh, a lot of, especially what we're looking for him to do and help us do, it will provide the structure that we would then use to present more to the public. You know, at this point, we keep talking about things that we're doing sort of behind the scenes, and it's not because we're trying to hide anything. It's just sort of still messy, trying to figure out how you pull it all together and what it really is focused on and how we might move forward and engage people. Um, but there is a lot of community engagement, and to the extent that you have ideas, suggestions, things that you want us to consider, uh, please do reach out. Uh, I, I would just say I was very excited in a meeting on last Friday, um, Public Citizen on their own started to work on a platform that could be used by the county, uh, I, I mean us as the county, not just staff or the board or anything else, to access in a much more user-friendly way than I've ever seen, information about what we are doing regarding economic development. Um, because I, my, my world has been focused on spreadsheets. Let's capture the information. Let's make it so we know what we have and what we're working with. Um, this is taking it to a much more user-friendly approach. And so I, I, I hope that they'll be in a position to come show that to us for too long. I know, it's interesting, huh?
I want to see that. It's funny. All right, with that, we are going to take, what time is it? One forty-five. We're going to take a ten-minute break. We'll be back at eleven fifty-five.
Want to do, do lunch?
Well, no, she's asking that we power three. She wants to be done by a certain time. She needs to get over the hill.
Okay.
She's willing to skip her lunch.
Oh, okay.
All right, it is 11:55. We are back in session. We are on the consent calendar. These items include routine, non-controversial matters and will be acted upon by the board in one roll call motion. If a member of the public has any questions or comments on an item on the consent calendar, they may provide them now. A member of the board or staff may request an item be pulled and considered separately. Do we have any public comment in the room? Seeing none, do we have any public comment on Zoom?
I have no raised hands, no chaps.
All right, with that, we will close public comment and bring it back to the board. I need to pull item 3.6 for a point of clarity. Does anybody have another item?
I'll pull 3.5 for clarity.
All right. So with the balance of the consent calendar minus items 3.5 and 3.6, could I have a motion?
I'd like a motion that we pass the consent calendar minus 3.5 and 3.6.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Supervisor Carpenter-Harris and a second from Supervisor Lutweller. Supervisor Lutweller?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter-Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Fraser?
Aye.
Chairman Cox? All right, item 3.5, authorize the chairman to sign letters of support regarding water storage and water temperature. Supervisor Gogan?
So at the Fishing Game Commission, which I'm a member of, we had come up with some numbers that we thought would be good for water temperature criteria and lake storage. Since then, there's been some other discussions between some members of that board and some outside members. And I would like to take this, I don't think I have the authority to change these numbers today. I think I have to take it back to the Fishing Game Commission and redo this with them. So I would like to pull this from the agenda today and bring it back. We only meet once every other month. Maybe I can get a small meeting together prior to, oh, six weeks from now. The last meeting was a couple of weeks ago.
It's May 10th is our next meeting.
May 10th is Fishing Game Commission meeting. So I'll see if I can get together with some of the other representatives there on the commission and get this straightened out, so we don't have to wait till after May 10th, our first meeting after May 10th.
Okay, so counsel, since this was agendized, do we have to have a motion to pull it?
Yes.
All right.
You also have to have public comment.
Yes, I do. Thank you for that. Seen what that causes. Do we have any public comment in the room on item 3.5? And any on Zoom?
I have no raised hands, no chaps.
All right, thank you. With that, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. Have a motion to pull the item?
Yes, I'd like to pull the item, 3.5.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion from Supervisor Gogan, second from Supervisor Lutweller to pull back and bring a revised version at a later time. Supervisor Lutweller?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter-Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Fraser?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Right, with regard to item 3.6, authorize the chairman to sign a letter of support, a letter supporting the opposition of AB 1168 Emergency Medical Services. The reason I pulled the item is there are two words missing on page 2, section 2, paragraph 2, the very first sentence. States exclusive operating areas are designated, or I'm sorry, designed to ensure equitable access by standardizing the level of services within these exclusive, it's missing, operating areas. So it's just a repetition of those two words that are earlier in the sentence. I have checked with counsel, it's just a really kind of considered a typo that we can adjust and move forward unless there are questions of board members.
I do have questions.
Yes. You may.
Jump into that now. I'm just wondering, through everything, I generally maybe loosely understood it, but I reached out to Chief of the Weaverville Fire Department and asked him if he was familiar, and he was, you know, agreed that we should oppose, and he wasn't familiar with it. So I'm just, I'm trying to understand where this is coming from and why, without having the benefit of anybody to talk to about it.
Sure, so we have that benefit for you today.
Great.
We have Donna Stone, she's the Executive Director of NorCal EMS, and I believe she is on Zoom and available to answer questions. Donna, are you there?
I am, thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Cox. Yes, I can give a little bit more background. I do have another document that I can read that outlines it a little bit different and maybe a little more clear in some respects. If that would be okay, I'd just like to read a couple of things.
Sure.
Okay. So this bill would fracture the delivery of emergency medical services, which puts the public at risk and harm. AB 1168 would negate statutory county authority. And just as a side, so the County of Trinity put contracts with NorCal EMS to administer and oversee the EMS system for the county, as required by state regulation. So AB 1168 would negate statutory county authority to administer and oversee a coordinated local EMS system as intended by the EMS Act. AB 1, which actually was in 1980. AB 1168 would dismantle over 40 years of coordinated development and EMS delivery at the county level and prevent counties from ensuring equitable delivery of EMS service to historically disadvantaged communities. It would confer complete discretion upon city and district fire departments to start up or discontinue emergency ambulance services without contemplating the impact to the local EMS system. And it lacks a mechanism to hold these entities accountable when they fail to provide a standard of care or choose to disconnect, discontinue service. Another portion of this bill, AB, as it relates to EOAs, which is Exclusive Operating Areas, AB 1168 seeks to return emergency medical services delivery to the patchwork system that the EMS Act intended to fix. Again, the EMS Act was back in 1980. AB 1168 would create a third tier of governance, giving cities and districts independent authority from counties. A county's ability to oversee and ensure equitable and standardized emergency medical services across the county through long-established exclusive operating areas would cease to exist. City and district fire departments who have had no experience in providing ambulance service for more than 40 years would be exempt from such oversight. County oversight is important because it assures standardized and coordinated EMS response and ensures that services are distributed equitably across the entire county. Currently, counties ensure equitable EMS delivery to all communities by purposefully defining exclusive operating areas that incorporate disadvantaged and well-resourced communities so that EMS service providers can fiscally sustain provision of services to all communities within the EOA. Intentional fragmentation of existing exclusive operating areas by AB 1168 risks the equitable delivery of care. AB 1168 also allows cities or districts to opt out of current continuing to provide ambulance service within their jurisdiction when no longer choose to do so. This is at odds with the current law, which states, in part, prehospital emergency medical services shall be continued at not less than the existing level, and the administration of prehospital EMS by cities and fire districts presently providing such services shall be retained. So the county, MODOC, or excuse me, Trinity County does not currently have any exclusive operating areas, but this works the same way as if a fire department or a district decides to start up an ambulance service if this bill were to pass. And then maybe six months later, decide to close down the ambulance service that really leaves fragmentation throughout the county. And the ability to cover EMS for the entire county is severely damaged. AB 1168 lacks any mechanism to hold cities or districts accountable for a standard of response or quality of patient care. The statutory EOA process and Health and Safety Code provides for mechanisms of accountability and enforcement by way of contract for both competitively bid processes or counties award for exclusively based on a provider's continuous service. The proposed lack of accountability is particularly concerning, given that these cities and districts have not operated or administered emergency ambulance services for decades. So basically, it will severely fragment the EMS system in all counties. I hope that helps, Chairman Cox.
Thank you, Don, I appreciate that. Supervisor Lutweller, does that answer your concerns? Do you have other questions?
No, I think that answers it. It sounds like this is basically an attempt where people have cities, special districts, whatever, that aren't playing nice with their county, and they want to have more control. That's what it sounds like to me, and the concern that I'm hearing back is, if this is in place, then it can basically pull apart what counties have put in place to make sure everybody's covered. So that's what I understand. I'm good with it.
And within that, Donna, the standard, excuse me, the standard of response and the level of patient care that you're describing, I would imagine that within that are all of the trainings that we see are constantly being provided to maintain a quality of excellence within your EMTs and paramedics and so forth.
It would be all of that, in addition to all of that, the role that NorCal EMS does per regulation means investigations, protocols, policies, medical oversight, transport times, compliance issues. It would just really fragment a lot of that. And it is correct, this has been brought up before and fought many times, and it's been through the courts before, and it was not something that's passed. It just keeps coming back. So it's just critical that we, again, put our voice forward and oppose this.
All right, thank you for that. Questions of any other board members? All right, we'll open this up for public comment. Any comment in the room? Seeing none, any comment on Zoom?
I have no raised hands, no chaps.
All right, we will close public comment, bring it back to the board. I did. In those two operating, those words, operating areas.
Can I make a motion to approve as corrected with your input?
I will second.
Okay, thank you. Motion from Supervisor Lutweller, second from Supervisor Fraser. Supervisor Fraser?
Aye.
Supervisor Lutweller?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter-Harris?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye. Thank you. All right, moving on to county matters. These items include nonroutine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the board or staff may request to hear an item out of order. And in the respect of the time of our DA, I would ask that we hear items 4.3 and 4.4 first. And does anybody else have any concerns over the order of items? All right. Uh, HR, item 4.3, take the following actions regarding the Deputy District Attorney, 1, 2, 3, 4 classifications. Number one, approve a side letter agreement with the Management and Confidential Unit, MNC, modifying Attachment A of the MOU regarding the Deputy District Attorney, 1, 2, 3, 4 classifications. And number two, authorize the Director of Human Resources to modify the alphabetical listing of classification by changing the ranges for Deputy District Attorney, 1 to M254, Deputy District Attorney, 2 to M264, Deputy District Attorney, 3 to M278, and Deputy District Attorney, 4 to M288, retroactively effective February 1st, 2023. Approximate cost and salary and benefits per month for a Deputy District Attorney, 1 at A step was $9,446 and is now $10,983. For a Deputy District Attorney, 2 was $10,318 and is now $12,017. Deputy District Attorney, 3 was $11,696 and is now $13,648. And Deputy District Attorney, 4 was $12,804 and is now $14,960. CAO Hamilton acting as HR, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. And kind of comments in the whole, I know each item will be called separate. But as you're aware, and our district attorney can speak to, we've had chronic vacancies um, in this department that we want to hopefully provide some solutions for. So this recommendation, um, will increase the salary schedule. We're not increasing the budget, um, due to those vacancies. We're essentially eliminating unfilled positions to bolster the, um, what we think we can recruit for. And, um, you know, I'd like to, you know, offer, if our DA would like to speak to this at all, but, um, we're looking forward to the board supporting this item to bring some reprieve and support in this department.
Okay. Thank you. Questions of board members? Okay. Hearing none, I would open it up to public comment. Is there any public comment in the room? Seeing none, is there any on Zoom?
I have no raised hands, no chance.
All right. We'll close public comment, bring it back to the board.
I'll make a motion to approve item 4.3 as presented.
Thank you.
I will second.
Thank you. Motion from Supervisor Frazier, second from Supervisor Gogan. Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Supervisor Lutwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Chairman Cox? Aye. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Item 4.4, take the following actions regarding the District Attorney Investigator, 1, 2 classifications. Number one, approve a side letter agreement with the PPOA unit, modifying Spreadsheet A of the MOU regarding the District Attorney Investigator, 1, 2 classification. And number two, authorize the Director of Human Resources to modify the alphabetical listing of classification, changing the ranges for District Attorney Investigator, 1 to O228 and District Attorney Investigator, 2 to O238, retroactively effective February 1, 2023. Approximate cost and salary and benefits per month for a District Attorney Investigator, 1 at A step was $6,731 and is now $7,808. And District Attorney Investigator, District Attorney Investigator, 2 was $7,476 and is now $8,666. CAO Hamilton.
Thank you. Um, same comments from item 4.3. It's just, it's across two, um, MOU groups and so just a procedural.
All right. Thank you. Questions of board members? All right. Seeing none, we'll open it up for public comment. Any in the room? And seeing none?
I have no raised hands, no chance.
All right. We will close public comment, bring it back to the board, and I would entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to pass 4.4 as stated. I'll second.
Thank you. Motion from Supervisor Gogan, second by Supervisor Frazier. Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Lutwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Chairman Cox? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. All right. We will back up now and move to item 4.1, Auditor Controller. Approve a budget adjustment for fiscal year 2223 for Courts, General Department 1500, increasing services and supplies by $62,000. Approve budget adjustment for fiscal year 2223 for Contributions to Others, Department 1990, increasing transfers out by $62,000. And approve a budget adjustment for fiscal year 2223 for Contingency, Department 9901, decreasing appropriations by $62,000. Increase in general fund appropriations in the amount of $62,000. Current balance in general fund contingency is $452,050. Um, our Assistant Auditor Controller, Christine Gaffney. Thank you. Hello.
Hello. Does anyone have any questions on this, um, agenda item?
Are there questions of board members? All right. Thank you. All right. We will take any public comment in the room? And seeing none, any on Zoom?
I have no raised hands, no new chats.
All right. We will close public comment, bring it back to the board. We entertain a motion.
I move that we approve as presented.
I will second.
Motion by Supervisor Lutwiler, second by Supervisor Gogan. Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Lutwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Chairman Cox? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Pause one moment, please. To transportation. Um, one moment. If I could, Supervisor Carpenter Harris, would it be sufficient? Do you need a total break or can we take an item out of order and that solves the issue? Or you need time?
I just need to ask a couple of questions.
All right, certainly. Three minutes, five?
Let's say five.
Uh, we'll take a five-minute break and return at, um, 12:21. All right. It is 12:21 and we will bring our meeting back to order. We are at Board of Supervisors, item 4.2. Discuss using approximately $40,000 in general fund during fiscal year 2020, 2223 to assist in the repair of storm damage to the privately owned portion of Garrett Road and authorize the CAO and auditor. I should have to pay some sort of fine for that, shouldn't I, when your phone goes off in a public meeting? Sorry. Apologize. I'm going to back up for clarity. Discuss using approximately $40,000 in general fund during fiscal year 2223 to assist in the repair of storm damage to the privately owned portion of Garrett Road and authorize the CAO and auditor to sign the necessary budget adjustments to allocate contingency funds in the amount of $25,000 to Miscellaneous Public Works, Department 3110. Increase in general fund appropriations in the amount of $25,000. Current balance in general fund contingency, um, after the previous item, uh, had requested contingency funding now remains at $390,050. Uh, Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
I would like to thank the, the board for, for taking the time to hear this. And I'd also like to just thank, um, county staff for preparing the documents necessary for today's, um, conversation about this. Um, as mentioned in my report out, I've, uh, went for the second time to the Garrett Road situation down in Hyam Palm and met with the community. And after doing some discovery on my own, um, and also having meetings with our Department of Transportation, and then continuing a visitation with the community, there seems to be a, well, there doesn't seem to be. There is, uh, some, some confusion and some, um, disagreement on the length of Garrett Road. And I would just like to, uh, ask our department head to share with us a little bit about what the findings were so that we can have a better understanding about why on the county road, um, website, it says Garrett Road is 1.4 miles, I believe. And it's Road 313, I think. And then, um, the road sign goes past that and that's where I believe the, the conflict of understanding occurs is, is where we say the end of the road is and where the community uh, believes that the end of the road is. And then, um, just kind of looking at this as a collective to try to solve and find a way, a path forward. Would you be willing to share your understanding of the situation?
Good morning, Panos Kokas, Department of Transportation. I became aware of this issue earlier in January when we had some storms. Uh, and we went and looked at different areas that may have potential issues. Garrett Road came up as one of the areas that may have some issues. As we looked through the storms, eventually what we expected to happen, I think I had a presentation of the board meeting stating that we can anticipate for this road to be washed out. As we looked at the area, we went and talked to the property owners who own the pasture, uh, where the road, uh, was located and asked for them to allow us to put a temporary bypass because this road is going to be destroyed and later on was destroyed. We're told to go as close to the existing easement as possible because they want to maintain their pasture intact and have as little disturbance as possible. During a research, uh, looking at exactly where is that easement so we can put a temporary road as they ask us to, we found out there is no easement. We could not have anything in our records. We look at the recorder's records. There is no easement recorded in that area. However, we didn't want to take that, uh, data as the only one that's available. So we went to the title company. We asked for them to do a title search. If the title company does a title search and it's not there, it does not exist. Based on that information, we're able to determine that that's not one of our maintained roads. In the past, people maintained roads because the maintenance group, uh, is maintaining all the roads. And if they assume it's theirs, then probably years ago, they went through maintaining all the roads and trying to do the best they can. We don't necessarily have the end of maintenance road at the exact location a lot of times. And this happened to be one of those times that our end of county maintained road sign was posted farther up. The only time we can tell what we have is when we look in our records. And if we have to remember, most of the county roads, they used to be new trails, new wagon trails. We call them roads by putting a little gravel, oil, call them asphalt roads, and now we have some damage. Part of it is the methods that they are constructed. Part of it is where is the location? In this case, it's a location next to a river that likes to move. It didn't like where it was. And between Mother Nature and Father Time, we get results that we don't like. And this is one of them. Uh, having, uh, looked at this area of thousand easements, we checked with CALOES and FEMA to find out if there is a road that we have been maintaining for a while and we do not have a recorded easement, an easement that was accepted by the Board of Supervisors before the damage. Is that road eligible for reimbursement if we repair it? The reply was no, unless it's a road that you do have uh, information and it's part of the recorded easement, you cannot be reimbursed. And this is the, the general practice. Anytime we have to repair a road or get money to be reimbursed before we proceed any further, what you have to do is provide a right-of-way justification to the funding source. Most of the time, we get money through federal highways, which that contract is administered by Caltrans to, to the local agencies. And one of the processes is verification of the right-of-way. If we do not own that right-of-way, we're not eligible to receive public road funds. So in this case, Garrett Road does not have a recorded easement that was accepted by the board. There are claims that there are implied easements, uh, prescriptive easements, and again, uh, those things do not apply in this case. Prescriptive easement comes into play if the underlying property owner wants the user of the road to stop using it or cease and desist, so to speak. And after five years, that easement is in place. Well, in this case, uh, it doesn't apply. It's only when they want to kick you out and have, I have the right to use that area. That's when prescriptive easement comes into play. So in this case, we have nothing. Nothing recorded, nothing that we can tell that it's part of the county accepted roads. So as such, we can use, uh, road fund money or be reimbursed from CALOES and FEMA. And that is the history of why we're saying this is not a road we can't do anything about. If we go and do repairs, then in the past, we have, unfortunately, in an area that we had some roads, in a Forest Service area, we repaired some road that we thought was ours, it had a minor slight, nothing large, I think over to something like that, and when we came back to get reimbursed, they asked for right-of-way verification, meaning, could you prove that you have an easement? And usually, we go back in our documents and we get the easement, one was recorded, one was accepted. This came, in this case, we did not have a recorded easement for that road. We assumed it was county maintained road, and we ended up having to pay that money through the general fund because we could not spend road fund money because we did not own that easement. And in this case, we had to make the right-of-way search ahead of the time because it takes a lot of money to do a lot of the repairs, or even the temporary road, and we don't want to be in the same case as we were before. Do you have any questions I can answer?
Questions of Board members?
I know I've heard about the concern that, I guess I'm coming up with words, but implied responsibility because our sign said, indicated that the road ended as a county road much further than it actually does legally. Can you tell us a little bit more about that and the implications of that?
I never heard of the implied easement term before, and I've been doing this for a few years, as you can tell. Because the only time it becomes, not implied, but prescriptive easement is if someone wants to kick you out of that property, saying that you don't have the right to go through it, then if you can prove that you have used that area for five years or longer, then you do have an easement. The only time it doesn't apply, if it's a federal property, because I tried that on a federal property, they told me, no, this is the only time there is an exemption, you don't have a prescriptive easement. So there's no such thing as implied easement that I ever heard of. And County Council can verify that too.
In order for that to be prescriptive, the actual property owners would have to object to your use of that area, and we don't have any evidence that they were objecting during that timeframe, so it's no prescriptive because there wasn't any adverse possession.
And just for my own clarity, where is the sign relative to the road failure?
It's beyond the road failure.
And do you have an estimated distance?
I don't know the exact location because I have not visited, it was a road superintendent and one of our engineers when looked at the sign, but I know it's beyond the damage and it's again within the private property.
Okay, maybe we'll learn the answer to that during public comment. Any other questions? Go ahead.
I just, I want to make sure that I understand the ask that I'm making and that I have it, that I'm understanding it correctly. In order for our County Roads Department to even have the opportunity to go out and look at a path forward, we have to have a place for them to pull money from in order to get paid to do that because currently, as it sits within the current documentation and understanding, there's no way for us to pay them out of a line item or a road item. So in order to even start looking for a path forward, we have to have money to do that, correct?
Yes, the Department of DOT gets funded by highway users tax, commonly known as HUTA. Those are those gas taxes that people pay at the pumps, so many cents a gallon. And that time can be used only for publicly maintained roads, you cannot deviate for any other uses. If there is something that's not part of the maintained and recorded road system, we cannot use it. Whenever we work on airport things, we charge a time on an airport account. If we have to work with transit or with transportation issues that they're not part of the road, we have to charge a time in those accounts. Again, we have to, by law, have to provide a time sheet for each person working in transportation. So even I feel a time sheet, putting down my hours, where did you spend your time? Today, I'm going to say I was four days, four hours at the Board of Supervisors meeting, assuming it was road related. If it was part of the airports, then I have to split that time, what was regular Board of Supervisors for roads versus airports versus something else. So in case, in order for people from the Department of Transportation to assist with application or any other issues related to Garrett Road, the road fund must be made whole. Another issue beyond developers coming in and they want us to review their plans, we can't do that. We have to charge them on time and materials because you cannot use road funds for private benefits. That's caused by the state gifting of public funds. So we get audited by Caltrans for every time we have a project, we add it by the state controller, and they're very thorough, and they're going to find things that we didn't expect them to find, we thought they're doing the right thing. So we have to make sure that there are no findings against us because there are two things that happen. If the finding is severe enough, they're going to do with all future funds. If it's minor enough, we're going to be under a microscope and they're going to keep on having extra audits, so we try to avoid both of those as much as we can.
And I have a question for, I'm sorry, were you done?
Yeah, go ahead.
No, okay, yeah, mine is more for County Council, if that's all right. But you mentioned the gifting of public funds and part of my training, coming up to speed and doing travel and so forth, we learn about things like, we can't even tip out of county funds if we're paying for a meal on a county trip, that has to come out of our own money or we have to be a cheapskate, so it's weird, but that's this rule about gifting of county funds. And so I would like more clarity about that because what I see that we're moving towards is general funds to be used for this. And when I first looked at it, as much as I want to help, it seemed like it struck right into that gifting of county funds, which I'd like to better understand.
Yes, and it's not, there are state regulations as far as the funding for the DOT funds to be used for public purpose, but that also extends into even the general fund. Fund, so obviously county funds can't be used for private purpose, they have to be used for county public purpose. So there is that, that's problematic to spend those funds to fix a road that's privately owned, that we don't have any easement for, that would be a concern of mine. I'd also have some concerns about liability for undertaking work on a private road. I would have to look into whether or not our insurance would even cover that work, I would have serious doubts that it does. But that's something that we would want to research before any decision was made in that regard, just because once we undertake that, then we're responsible for the outcomes and that sort of thing, so, or could be responsible for that. So it's, there are other considerations at play as well.
So help me understand, so we recently changed the policy for waiving fees for things and thankfully turned over a lot of that responsibility to our CAO with only high-level things coming to us. But in that sense, we're waiving fees, so we're basically not requiring somebody to pay money that we require everybody else to do. And so I'm trying, I'm thinking of things, examples in my mind that could also be considered gifting of public funds, and I want to understand, where is this line drawn and how? The other thing that's on our agenda for later is the DOT to go plow in front of the fire department stations, which again, would take general funds to do that. So help me understand, what is this path that we follow that says you can do this and you can't do that?
And on waiving fees, sometimes there are individual circumstances that justify it, that is still per county good, and so I couldn't speak to the individual times when you're waiving those. This would be a much larger project, I couldn't speak to the exact amount, but it would be, it's my understanding, a very significant financial output, which is a distinction in and of itself. As for the later agenda item, there is a highway code that allows for public funds to be expended for private property or other public agencies, and so that's what that's falling under, is the state, is the highway code that allows for that specific, you have defining of a county good, it has to go toward another public agency, which it would be for the volunteer fire department. So it's a little bit different, there's a statutory support for that where that does not exist here. So that's, that's a very big distinction on those particular items.
Okay. And I do recall even within our policy that we have in place for the fee waivers, there is supposed to be this broad public benefit sort of a thing, so that's part of how this, okay, I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
So it was, it's, it's kind of my, it's my understanding in reading what I was asking for, that the main look for the funds is so that we can allow staff to research and then to also come up with a path forward, not so much fixing where the River Cut Bank occurred, that's a whole nother, like, giant expenditure that's going to have to have many, many organizations involved to fix that. But what I'm asking for and why I brought this forward is to at least free staff's time in order to be able to try to find out how this, how this misunderstanding occurred, when it occurred, and how long has it been a misunderstanding maybe, and then also to look at options of how to solve this problem in terms of the, is it a county road, isn't it a county road? And be able to at least have that time to have those conversations, I think, is some of what I was asking for, looking for. And we can't even do that, right? Without having a way for them to put their time in. So we can't even have the County Road Department have a meeting, if you will, or come down and do things because we don't have a funding source for this Garrett Road situation. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
I do have another quick question for County Council, and this one might be a little farther out there, but is the county liable for any issues concerning the fact that we did have a sign up that says the road was maintained to that point? And can somebody say, okay, I bought this property with the expectation that there's a county road that has, that accesses it, or I bought this business with the expectation that I have a county maintained road, and now you're telling me it's not there? What's our liability in that situation?
I mean, just, I'd have to look into the history, but I don't think that there's really much exposure for liability there, just because the sign is there, you do go through title search, the easements go with that, so when you're going through the process of purchasing property, those, the sign on the side of the road isn't your official record, and it's not anything that affects your title or your expectations, quite frankly, those should be through your title company. So I don't think there's any liability there for it. And again, it wasn't a prescriptive easement situation, you didn't have a bunch of the homeowners in the area objecting to the county road extending that far, the county occupying that territory. That has to be an actual objection that's made, you have to hold that property adversely. So I don't think there's any, necessarily any liability there, but you know, I haven't had an opportunity to research that in detail either, but I don't believe so, because those aren't the actual official records.
And I guess one more, so if we are not able to find a way through to help with use of general funds and county resources, basically it's left to the people that use that road to pay for any research, any work to be done and to create and maintain a new road on their own.
That's considered a private property and we do not have jurisdiction on private properties.
Okay. Other questions of Board members? Looks like we have got them covered. All right, at this time, we're going to open public comment and we'll begin in the room.
Darryl Forland, Weaverville. I kind of understand the issues that are being talked about here, but I got to tell you, that's a significant difference of opinion that I've seen. I've been working in Trinity County in a lot of different elements, most of which has something to do with real estate. And all of that time, the county always claimed that it had prescriptive rights to the roads that weren't deeded to them. And, and I mean, that's been, and what decided whether or not it was prescriptive right wasn't whether or not they were arguing about it, is whether they were actually maintaining the road. And we know clearly here, they were maintaining the road up to the end of county road sign. I know in '06, that road was washed out and rebuilt with county funds. The real problem with that is that you guys approve a maintained mileage every year, and you do this every year for whatever the mileages are on here. And I don't know what the percentage is, but there is a significant percentage of roads that are on this list that you guys are approving every year that are not deeded to the county, they're by prescription. And the prior administration at the Road Department argued that in fact, they had prescriptive rights and they had prescriptive rights with the 40 feet, even though the county wasn't maintaining the road to that level. And so I was standing here arguing before that, that the county had prescriptive rights, but they were limited to the road, to the right of way that they were actually maintaining. And now we're saying, no, they don't have any rights. And you're going to find, for instance, I did just a little bit of research, there are significant sections of Old Lewiston Road, which I think all of us would consider to be a pretty standard arterial road to Lewiston from the beginning of whatever, certainly the beginning of my time, that are not deeded to the county. They're there by whatever purpose. East Weaver Creek Road is a road that was deeded by the landowners to the Forest Service, not to the county. The county is maintaining a road that was deeded, not deeded to the county. So you've got a huge issue of what you're going to do with the maintained mileage if you're saying that a road that we're maintaining, we don't have any rights to. Because, I mean, to me, it's like, it's so far afield from whatever we've been talking about over the years, that it really needs to be set down and talked about at a different level than in a public comment in a board meeting. So I think there's no reason why anybody would legitimately think that the end of county road sign on the ground isn't that. And so to me, the fact that there's an end of county road sign there and the county has been maintaining the road with that sign means that it's a county road and has been maintained by the county road, and the significant work that's being done has been done by the county in the past on the same road. Thank you.
I'm going to take my opportunity to ask a question of the public, and my question would be, if this isn't the place to deal with this, what is?
Well, I don't know, because, I mean, like I say, at this point in time, I'm sitting here with a three-minute limit, and we can't really get into any of the details about all of that kind of stuff. So to me, we need, we ought to have an environment for that kind of dialogue to happen at some place.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Cindy Klein. I run a nonprofit spay and neuter program for the community of Hayfork, Hyam Palm, Wildwood, and Trinity Pines. The Hyam Palm vets spay and neuter 99%, 99.9% of the dogs and cats going through this program and have for over five years. Last year alone, they spayed and neutered close to 170 dogs and cats. To date, they've spayed and neutered almost 900. I would not have this program without Ushi and Abby, it would not be possible without them. The week they had to close, all appointments going through this program had to be canceled. Just that week alone potentially caused more dogs and cats to have babies, adding even more petta overpopulation in a town overrun with discarded dogs and puppies, kittens and cats, as it is. If people going through this program don't have access to their office, it has a snowball effect. If we have no access to them, these animals won't get fixed. Where will these, all these puppies and kittens go? If we don't have access to them, these animals won't get fixed. Where will, where will many of these puppies and kittens end up? They will end up at our overcrowded animal shelter that has no space, as it is. The Hyam Palm Animal Clinic is a hu, I'm sorry, I just got, I was so calm!
You're doing a great job!
I don't like public speaking, as you can tell, but this is a very important subject to me. The Hyam Palm Animal Clinic is a huge asset for our community and a vitally important one. It's past time the county steps up and does the right thing to permanently fix this ongoing problem. This is not a private benefit, but rather public benefit. The work that they do directly positively affects the county due to the many spay and neuters thereby avoiding animal control intervention. Thank you. Sorry for interrupting. Thank you. Sorry for taking so long.
Give us a minute to pass this out, and then it won't subtract from your time while we're kind of distracted. Yeah. Okay.
Are we ready?
Thank you. Yes.
Eberhard Schneider, Hyampom. Ladies and gentlemen, Garrett Road was a county road for a long time, for over fifty years. The county maintained that road. The end of county road sign is at our gate, way beyond the damaged portion we're talking about today. Oh, and forgot, I want to thank you for hearing our matter here. And the property owners, this, this sign was not put there by mistake. It was there for a reason. It's right beyond the last private driveway that enters the road. So that all the private properties are served by the county road. And when people bought their properties, they were aware of that. They relied on that to be the county road to access their properties. The, there are surveyed parcel maps, like the one from the Malvi property, that show the end of the county road, right where the end of the county road sign is. So people relied on that. The easements of those properties are surveyed, recorded, and they end right where that end county road sign is. There are many ways to acquire an easement. Deeded easements are only one of them. In this case, it's probably an implied dedication. Darryl Forstlin calls it a prescription. And we know that the county DOT was well aware of that fact, that the deeded easement ended at our property line, and the last part of Garrett Road was by, they call it prescription by implied dedication. So the county was aware of that. The people rely on that. There are documents, there are surveys. This one is from an old timer of Trinity County, an old surveyor that knew his business, that placed the county road right up to the end county road sign. And it was maintained all the way up to that sign forever. So all I'm asking is that you acknowledge the fact, a well established fact that County Road three one three is the county road all the way to the end, Garrett Road, to the end of the sign, and accept the fact that it is a county road that would enable the DOT to do the repairs, that would enable the county to apply for FEMA money, for OES money. That would be best, be the best solution. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Ushi Schneider, and my husband and I live in Hyampom Animal Clinic together. Thank you for listening to our concerns. The first document my husband gave you was sent to us by the Trinity County Road Department in two thousand and four, which shows that the Trinity County Road Department was well aware of what it was doing and that it was not a mistake that, that county road was maintained up to that sign that has been there forever. Also, my husband mentioned, you know, those easements that have been surveyed by our neighbors across our property to the end of the county road. You were talking about liability earlier. If you decide today that that is not a county road, there will be three properties that will have no legal access to their property, and I'm sure they're not going to go quiet about it. The other thing is that, you know, yes, when we bought the property, the sign was there, and it did say clearly, this is county road. The county road department also denied us to put a gate across it because they said it's a county road. Previous owners had trouble with the road department. One of the owners, previous owners wanted to put a culvert in, and the county, county road department said, no, you can't do that because it's a county road. Another owner wanted to push dirt across the road from one side of his property to the other, and he was told, no, you can't do that because it is a county road. It is interesting that now all of a sudden it is not a county road anymore, and it is very hard to understand. The consequence of that will also be that, you know, sooner or later, we will not have access to our property as our owners won't have access to their property, and we will not be able to run our business anymore. Cindy has said it pretty nicely. We are the only, I mean, there are not enough veterinarians in Trinity County as it is. We are the only veterinarian south of Douglas City. We take care of a huge area. We got a lot of people. We are also the only low cost clinic in Trinity County. You have a lot of people in Trinity County who cannot afford to pay their entire paycheck to their veterinarian just to have the animals taken care of. Cindy also mentioned overpopulation. We not only spay those animals that go through the program. Last year, we have spayed three hundred and twenty dogs and cats alone. If we have to close our office, it will have a huge impact on the residents of this county and also to the county itself. Because we are also doing all the rabies vaccination in the southern area, in the southern part of the county, which is a public safety issue. So I really urge you to consider very carefully how you decide on this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Donald Flasher. I live in Hyampom. Haven't known Ebby Nushi the whole time I've lived there. And I'm, I guess I'm flabbergasted. I don't understand how, one thing that was said was that you can't look at the road and have the department transportation look at the road without having money? I don't understand how you can do that if you've been maintaining it for fifty years. You obviously look at the road when you're working on it. I don't understand it. I just, I doesn't make sense to me. I can understand your reluctance to want to spend a lot of money. That's why I would assume you would want to get it from the state emergency services, something like that, the federal government, because there was a disaster, right? If you abandon this road, you're not going to get a penny for it. You, I, there's no way they're going to give you money that they say, that you already say, oh, it isn't ours. It doesn't make any sense. It's been fifty years that it's been used with signage. I don't know why the prescriptive rights doesn't fly. It doesn't, doesn't make any sense to me. It's, uh, to me, it shows somehow a lack of understanding of what a rural community is. I mean, maybe in a city, you don't have these issues and it's obvious how things go, but talking to Darryl Forstlin, he obviously has a great understanding of what goes on and how this county has been formed and shaped and the roads and the responsibilities. You have to step up to the plate. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room?
My name is Sally Huber, and I'm a Hyampom resident. I would just like to reiterate that I was born just down the street and grew up in Hyampom and ran around on the ranch down there. And these people do a lot more for our community besides all their animal work. And it affects the rest of our community besides, um, you know, the people that come there. And people come there from not just our own county. They, they have people come from a pretty great distance. And it's been a county road my whole life. My father was on the county road a few years ago. He maintained that road. That road has been historically maintained. And I think it would do, it would be a terrible disservice of our county to abandon it now.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room wishing to speak? Okay, do we have any public comment on Zoom?
I have no raised hands and no chat.
All right. With that, we will close public comment and bring it back to the board. I think the, the one thing that stands out to me is that this really isn't, there's not enough, there isn't enough dialogue and understanding that can be achieved inside of this space for me. I don't see how we can, I, I understand what's being said, that you've got to have a place to bill those dollars to. You sit in an office and you do legal work in a way that our government either will or will not respond to. And work that you attempt to do, I hear you saying, if I try to bill dollars to something that I know I can't, and that's discovered, we're in big trouble. I, I can't not look at that, but also I can't not look at testimony that says my father maintained that road for fifty years. So we have history that shows other practices and how you merge those two things, particularly with our public comment that shows other roads in our county with a similar story. If we had significant damage on those roads today, we would be having even further conversation about what is this going to look like? I think it's really important. The decision we make today is going to set a precedent for when the next thing happens. What are we going to do with that? So for me, I need a deeper dive into what are we going to do with that? And then I, I agree with Mr. Forstland, it can't happen productively in this particular setting. And I don't know what that setting looks like either. I don't know if council, if you have history with, with what that might be.
Well, I think for starters, probably need more information just about the history of the area. So I think that you could possibly gather that and come back at a meeting if you wanted to extend public comment beyond that. But we might just be able to answer a lot of these questions just by digging in a little deeper to the history of that road. And that might give some clarity and then come back at a different time and give a really detailed report on that.
And I feel like too, it does involve other roads as well. If we have other roads in our county system that fall into the same scenario, if you will, that aren't on the table for discussion today, simply because we don't have damage on them that we're talking about, it seems like it needs to be a broader conversation so that the entire piece is solved. If indeed we are annually adopting a list of roads that we are saying are in our system, and there's some additional clarity that needs to be made to understand what that piece means, it seems to me like that needs to be a, a part of the conversation as well.
So I have a question. We have about a hundred and three thousand dollars in this, in this fund. How much would it cost to fix that road? It seemed to me it would be a lot more than a hundred and three thousand dollars to fix that. So I just kind of wanted to get a feel for.
You'll not be able to fix it in the current location for two reasons. One, it's fairly expensive. And second, the regulatory agencies, DWR, Fish and Wildlife, and other agencies that have control over the waterways will have so many criteria, they may not even make it possible for us. Just the environmental permitting for something like this could be close to a million dollars, even if they allow us to go through it. So the best solution would be to go elsewhere in case they want to fix it. Because once you are next to a water body like South Trinity River, every agency in the country and in the state will be regulating your actions.
I have a question. Well, I don't know if it's a question or a statement, but so to even get to the place where we can ask the, the department to explore, dive deeper, look for things, we have to have a way to fund that activity. Because they can't fund it. They can't go to the, to the Garrett Road line if, if we say that it's not our road. So how do we get them the, the time and the money to be able to do this deeper dive on a road that the county says isn't ours, but we need to solve this problem?
Well, I, I think the deeper dive is determination whether or not that is our road and come up with those details and those answers in a more detailed format that we can convey to you all and to the public as to why more specifically we feel it is or isn't a county road.
So, but my question is, is still, who, so who would do that? Count, Trump County Council, Department Head, or would it engage the county staff? Because if, if they're not allowed to, to do anything because there's nowhere to pull their paycheck from, if it's not, do, am I not making myself clear?
No, you do. I, I understand what you're asking.
I just want to know how we're going to solve. We have to have a way to, to find, to, to be allowed to start working on a path forward. So we need to figure out how we're going to do that, I guess.
So my question is, you're asking, what's going through my head as you're asking that question, is that, yes, it's kind of like engaging an attorney to begin a discussion over how you're going to solve your own personal issue. Similar to that, but I feel like it goes deeper than that because we have to get some history here that goes, you know, who, who preceded our current department? And what were their practices? What did our current department head walk into? He was handed some kind of history that went before him that, in my opinion, the, the weight of this outcome shouldn't fall on Director Caucus. He is doing what he knows to do within his understanding of the laws that bind his licensing, really. Am I correct in that's, okay. But we do need that deeper dive into history.
I, I was, I'm building on what both of you said. It seems like we need to come up with some very clear direction to staff about questions that we want answered, information that we want presented, and then schedule that time to come back, and then there can be a presentation and, and questions that.
I agree, but I want questions answered for more than just staff. So are you saying you want the staff to go find the answers to the questions that the public generally has some answers to, or some history into, insight into the history?
Yeah, I, I, my thought is that they would do the, speak to the people they need to speak to, look into historical records, do, you know, address the things that we heard about prescriptive easements. There's the issue that we heard about other examples of roads that I think everybody would be very surprised to hear aren't considered county roads. So comprehensively, we direct what information do we want presented? And do whatever you got to do to get it.
And does that also require the location of a billing source? If we are addressing a problem, generally, do you have to have a road to pin it to?
Well, I think you're, I mean, what you're, if you're diving into that history to make a determination, I think you're looking at really kind of developing almost, it's a legal opinion essentially as to whether or not we own this road, looking at the entire history and the law that applies to it. So I think that's what you're really looking at. So that's would be my recommendation is that we, you know, provide that to you and give you more details, but we're going to have to get some information from staff as well on it. And so, but the funding of it would be like any other research thing you're doing within the county. So it's not, I'm not worried about a gift of public funds in that setting because we're trying to make a determination about the status of this road for the county.
And, and the other request I would like to make if the board agrees is we often get kind of stuck at that point about whether it is or isn't and what we can't do. I would love to see something that says, here's the lowest risk thing you could do to solve this problem. Because what I'm hearing is, Because what I'm hearing is there is risk to try to solve this problem. We can't legally show that we have authority. We can't get reimbursed by others. We could set ourselves up for a precedent of, will you fix my private property up with a new road? Why won't you do this property? All kinds of things. But there is a least risky way to proceed that you still might advise us not to do. But I would like to see that least risky approach to solving the problem.
Sure, there'll be consequences to certain paths and alternatives within their opinion.
If there's, is there any, is county staff available for comment? Is David, do you have any?
Again, let's go back to the maintenance. When we maintain roads, we assume they are part of the existing road system or have easements. One item we can do is to look at all the roads we have with a surveyor to find out that we have existing easements for all of our roads and which ones we don't. And that's going to be one way to find out where the location of all those roads ends. But that's going to be a large undertaking as we have to look at over 600 some miles of county maintained roads.
And I'm afraid of what you're going to find.
Well, again, before we go to FEMA or CALOES to ask for money to repair that road, they're going to ask us to verify ownership of that road and do you have the required right of way? And if I can produce that in a map that was accepted by the Board of Supervisors. A record of survey means that a surveyor went in that area and looked at the boundaries of that lot. And if there is a road reference to physically in the area, they just show it with a plot. What they're concentrating on the record of survey is that lot of that area. That's all they looked at closely. And that's based on records. They do not show necessarily easements if they're not part within that lot.
Thank you very much. David Kolbeck, Department of Transportation. I did want to just take a moment here to clarify from my perspective some issues here. I did, I will say draft the majority of that staff report that is in front of you now. So in that regard, I want to highlight the options that are currently in front of you. There's two lists there right at the bottom. One is the, and we haven't really talked about this, what miscellaneous public works is. Yes, it's general fund money. But by adding Garrett Road to a list of miscellaneous public work items that were allowed to address through your approval to do so, let's us look at this. There is $15,000 remaining in that fund for this fiscal year. There's also the second bullet point, the potential for $25,000 to augment that fund for the remainder of this fiscal year. That gets you to a $40,000 ask. That would give you a total of $103,000 within the DOT Miscellaneous Public Works Fund for this fiscal year. So that, all that is capturing is just what Supervisor Carpenter Harris had mentioned, the ability to talk and address this issue with DOT time, staff and materials. Within that, I would suggest that, well, this is the recommendation from staff in front of you now, with county council's advice, to also add to that a legal memo that would help determine the history of this road, its legal status, and any eligibility for road funds to be applied to this issue. That could also be included in some of the tasks that are associated with this line item. The line items that were written above about the middle of that staff report is just a list. It includes presentations or meetings with the public. But it also includes trying to pursue other funding opportunities. You can add what else you wish in that in order to address this problem as proactively as we're able to right now. Should you choose to adopt this addition, this augmentation, or the use of $15,000 in miscellaneous public works that does not change the potential for you to act differently in the future, in the next budget, in the other chair, however you wish, it doesn't obligate you to stick with that path. It just helps us move on this issue right at the moment, which from my perspective in DOT is what we're looking to be able to do. This is the only path that we see at the moment to proactively address this. Another key consideration, I think, in terms of what council brought up in terms of the legality of using public funds for private benefit is that I think there's a clear case here that this particular issue has a public health and safety benefit. And many of the public comments spoke to that, not only in terms of that clinic, but also the natural resources of the area supplied by that road. That could be sediment reduction to the river. It could be some added benefits from that sediment reduction, ingress, egress for wildfire protection and access to Forest Service land. There's a number of different public and health, safety benefits, sorry, public health and safety benefits that could justify the use of public funds in this particular case. As Supervisor Lutweller mentioned, it does raise a precedent setting situation of where else you would wish to do, take this type of action. There are a number of other items in the miscellaneous public works that also speak to individual sites that serve a greater benefit, yet are directed that on property that may or may not be owned by the county. So in that regard, a precedent has been set, but is in front of you as a board to determine if this is one spot where you wish to focus your attention. My last comment real quick is to again reiterate that this has to fit within the priorities of DOT as our current workload currently exists. Keep that in mind, if we do this, then we can't do something else. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm just going to ask if county council has any comment on the way that that was positioned and how it supports putting these funds to use in this way without risk of getting into improper use of public funds?
Yeah, I think using those funds for the purposes of what we're talking about, which is to explore what options you have with regard to this. I don't have an issue with that because I do think that this is something we have to ferret through. So if you're taking it in increments where you're talking about, we're going to take this first step, use the $15,000 to figure out what we're doing with this particular road and what the options are and to have those discussions with the various entities, I don't have an issue with that. And you're going to come back at a later time and have additional proposals for your consideration along with a legal memo. Then I think that's a perfectly fine way to go.
And doesn't the health and safety issue further support and actually almost in a parallel different track allow for that?
Yes, if you're able to articulate specific findings that do incorporate public health and safety issues, then you're addressing that expenditure of public funds issue more specifically. When you're talking about the small amount of money he's talking about for purposes of really just trying to address this issue and figure out and dig into it deeper, I don't think you have to necessarily articulate that because we're still trying to figure out if this is going to be considered legally a county road or not.
Sure.
But as you go forward, you're going to have to be definitely able to articulate specific findings with regard to that. If it's considered a private road, that's the ultimate outcome.
So one more direction to staff that I would recommend is to address David's last statement, which was assuming we grant this money and we come back with a way forward based on legal counsel and so forth. Where does this fall amongst priorities? We've heard that we have 20 different major storm damage related projects amongst all the other things. So I think it would be helpful to have staff come back and say, here's our top 10 and here's where this fits in this top 10, or it doesn't, or whatever else. Because it's one thing to say yes, assuming we get there. The other is when? So and scares the heck out of me just to even hear that we could be spending a million dollars, which also means this much time to even have the studies that support being able to do the work. So yeah, I just want us to, I always get concerned, you heard me, those of you who are here, with the general plan, I'm all about the timelines and the deadlines, it's like, what can we really expect? And it's not to drive people to do things faster than they can or should, but it's to have shared understanding about that. And so I would like us to have that information in a very factual way of here are the choices that we're making as the people responsible for allocating these, our resources to fix things. And here's where this fits in, based on how we make those decisions.
Like I said in my previous presentation, we have disaster damage since 2017 that has not been repaired. Some of that, those FEMA funds are going to expire soon if we do not take care of those sites. So we have to go historically, what are the expiration of certain funds? The other part, we have to look at how many trips we have on that road a day, a week, ADTs, to determine which one of the two. And of course, when can we get all the environmental work done? Like I said, we have $35 million worth of disaster damage that needs to be completed. And about $5 million of that is supposed to be local funds. We're in the process of getting an RFP out to be able to get a consultant engineer to help us manage those projects because we do not have the staff. It's just physically impossible for us to do all that work. So where this is going to fall in the weight of things or priorities, it's not going to be on the top because, like I said, we have damage that's old and we lose our funding. So have to go to those projects where we'll make sure that we complete those projects and receive the funding. Otherwise, we'll never receive the funding to be, to complete those projects. And if we don't, future disasters are going to exacerbate the damage on those roads. And some of those roads are one lane roads where arterial, minor arterial, they're major roads, especially the only one that goes to Ruth Zina in some of those areas. So we do have a capacity issue.
Can you, can you address any portion of this as being scalable? Is there a way to get the road where it's not ideal, but at least it's passable? Put a Band-Aid on it, in other words, while, is that something that can be considered as you look into?
Again, in order for us to spend significant amount of time, we'll need to have those general fund dollars to charge our time. Otherwise, we're going to be, have issues with the editor, state controllers, editors. However, we have to look at the area, we can spend the time to look at the areas where it is feasible, where it's not feasible. Our preliminary review of the site before we found out anything about the easement issues, we looked at something that goes peril to the river. But those did not seem to be as well suited locations because there's a waterway that's going through that we have to put two different water crossings. Ideally, it would be to go as close to the hills, if not up on the hill, where you do not have to cross those waterways or have as few water crossings as possible. And again, where is the river going to go? Like I said earlier, between Mother Nature and Father Time, we get a lot of surprises we don't like. And this river is going to be moving from what I found out. It has, it has moved from 2000, from the opposite end to the west all the way to the east in 20 some years. And again, it's very unpredictable.
So I'd just like to pause this at this moment and see if somebody would put a motion on the table. We're having a good bit of discussion and we seem to be going in a particular direction. Is someone ready to do that?
I will move that we approve the allocation of funds as presented and the authorization of use as presented, along with staff direction that would be county council to do further research and create a formal legal opinion regarding ownership of this road. County council to prepare a quote, least risky unquote, approach to solving this problem. And DOT to provide an updated view of project priorities.
And could that updated view of, oh. Did you want to throw some history in there?
Well, I assumed the history would be informing the legal opinion, but we can clarify that.
I would, I would love it if you did throw that in.
Okay. So county council to do further research to create a formal legal opinion regarding ownership of this road, including gathering of historical information that might influence that opinion.
Thank you, and with that, I would second.
And your dollar amount, Rick, was the 15,000?
No, it's actually, it's 40,000.
It's 40.
You're going to use the whole, okay.
Yep. I don't want to stop and start. And with that on there and seconded, I just have a strange question. But I'm hearing from you, Director Kokas, that, you know, for us formally to do these kinds of things and NEPA and CEQA and everything that has to be done. If the private property owners decided that they wanted to put in a new drive on their property and there were somehow magically funds for them to do that on their own, would they have to go through all those hoops?
I think Mr. Kolbeck would be better to answer that as an environmental compliance specialist because I don't know much about the private side. I know about the public side.
I think that the short, short answer is yes. Even if it was a private road that was, say, set at a different alignment, that it would trigger a number of different regulatory agencies, such as, for example, Fish and Wildlife Service. Their Fish and Wildlife Service would go through their own CEQA process, yet that CEQA process, they would be lead agency, it would still be triggered.
So even if they were just, and putting new pathway, road, driveway, whatever, on their own property because of where it is, it would trigger these things?
It very much depends, yes. And because of the topography of this site, I would say more than likely it would trigger.
Okay, thanks. Just still looking for ways. Okay, so I don't have any further questions.
Does anybody care to make a motion or are there any other questions?
I would like to see more information. I know this is one of those things that there's a lot more behind the scenes that we don't know about. There's a lot of history involved with a lot of the county roads in Trinity County. And I have been involved with some of that in the past. So I would like to see a better description of what we're working with here. And then I do, I think this is going to be an ongoing issue that we're going to have and not just on this road, but we're going to have to determine a lot about county roads in Trinity County. There's, we have issues with right of ways and easements through national forest and on other private properties. It's going to be, it's going to be interesting. I'm looking forward to seeing what county council comes up with.
Like what you're asking to see is contained inside of Supervisor Lutweller's motion.
I do, I just, I, when we get to that point, I have a feeling that it's going to be more than, there's going to, there's going to be some back and forth. And so I think that it's going to be a major issue when we do get to that point and start having that exchange.
All right, Ashley?
I have a question. On your motion, do you have a specific date you want that brought back?
Well, I'm gone until the 18th of April, starting this week. So let's see, we have a first and a take us a while to gather the information. So I do want some time. Maybe the second. Yeah, that looks good, second.
June 20?
The second meeting in June?
I believe they're saying that's the 20th of June. And just from my own curiosity, how do you get to your homes right now?
They're driving through the pasture. We've seen that in the pictures.
Okay.
I have a question. And I don't, I don't know if this is for Panos or for David, but this is just a curiosity, is there any way, you know, assuming that this goes through, that the county could, is there any way possible to maybe do some hardening on the road that the folks have developed themselves, just to kind of keep people safer? Is there any ability to have any supplies that are maybe already on hand and to just have the road crew kind of shape that up a little bit? Is there any possibility for that? I'm just asking.
If we do, I have to do a little bit more research on it. But if they do, they'll take away from those funds that are available for the research.
Okay.
Please.
Excuse me, just to reiterate what was just stated, the $25,000 basically was a ballpark guess. And that was one that was intended to include short term solutions to the existing detour road. That we didn't have the funds to say develop a whole budget, but we have all of those figures. The cost of our crew time, the cost of our equipment, the cost of any fabric or gravel, trucking costs. All of that can be calculated if we have the approval to calculate it. So there, we just took a guess at 25,000 for that purpose. It was again intended as a short term solution. Also in that staff report, you have mid-range solutions, which would be ones of exploring sort of, you know, plans or anything else, or where that permanent solution could be, as well as long-term solutions that would include actual construction. as well as long-term solutions that would include actual construction or funding of that long-term or that road realignment. So the simple answer is, we put in the twenty-five thousand specifically for that reason, to try to harden that location as much as we could. Don't know what that exactly looks like, though.
Thank you.
And I guess one question, just while you're still there, David, is, so we're hearing from county council, the, the June twentieth, before we're here, back here, hearing the back-and-forth discussion to figure out this very entwined issue. What can the folks that have driven here from Heimpong expect to take place physically there between now and June twentieth, based on other priorities and what we may be about to authorize?
In all honesty, I'm not in a position to promise anything. All I'm here is to request that we can even continue to pursue options. So I will not promise anything here. I'll leave that, I'll leave that there.
Thank you.
And I have a scenario to ask you. So when we consider how roads came to be many, many years ago in this county, somebody drove a certain way, and they drove it enough times, suddenly it looks like a road. And it was on a little bit of my property and a little bit of your property, and then over time, it's a road. What would happen if this, wherever it is that they're driving right now, just sort of became hardened, shall we say, over time? What is that, does that end up being, I don't know where these words apply. Does that end up somewhere being prescriptive? Does it end up being not, what, what, what applies to that?
My assumption is that they would have to dedicate an easement. If they wanted to perfect that easement, that would be part of their title. If they did so, then it would essentially be there in perpetuity until it was changed. But any subsequent sale of the property would show that easement in place for a specific purpose, such as the easements that are already on that parcel for other specific uses. This would be an additional one. However, I will highlight that if the expectation was the county to take over that road as part of their maintained road miles, it would have to meet current county road standards in order for that to be approved by the board or presented by the Department for Approval.
So could that, that option of a dedication of an easement based on owner preference be something that gets provided as an option that they look into? Or does that become a different conversation? Because that's a private landowner choice, and we're talking here about county options. It's kind of two separate things.
In order for the county to make a road publicly owned, that, that road has to serve more than one property. It cannot be a private driveway. So it has to serve several properties. It has to be designed and constructed to county standards for now for the board to accept that road. Offer of dedication has to be made. They have to have a parcel map. They will show it on that map, approved, prepared by a licensed land surveyor, and has to be accepted by the Board of Supervisors, then recorded, and then it becomes a county-maintained road. But again, we cannot go and give someone a private driveway, call it a county-maintained road, and then we'll try to maintain it.
No, and I wasn't suggesting that.
But I'm just saying.
Sure.
It has to be more than just one property.
Sure.
If it was just one property, it would be very, very difficult. If there are more properties and that road has been designed and constructed to county standards, then the board will be able to accept that easement as part of their road maintenance.
I'd like to amend my motion. Hopefully you will second that amendment. So the county council aspects of what I was putting forward would be by the June twentieth board meeting, the, for the next board meeting, would be DOT to provide updated view of project priorities and provide guidance regarding the timing of any work to be done, short-term work, research, et cetera, by the next board meeting. So at the next board meeting, you would come and say, here are our priorities, and here's what we're prepared, not in this moment, but in two weeks, to say what the, the public can expect to happen or not happen between now and June twentieth.
I prefer to defer that by another meeting, because the next board meeting, I'm going to be gone. I will not be here. So can we postpone it to the following meeting in May?
Okay.
And I will second that with one question first. Again, when we are asking for our Department of Transportation to do something on a specified calendar, you know, by a specified date, with that comes, we're asking you to not do some other things. And I would like to hear from David what isn't going to get done if we put this date on this. And I'm not calling this unimportant by asking for that, but there could be multiple groups of other people who are expecting outcomes by certain dates, who are going to be affected by this decision also. So figuring out how to triage all of that is something we need to consider.
To be honest, I'm not in a position to answer that question with any precision right now. I have not mapped out that particular meeting date and can't give you a rundown of my workload that this would then potentially impact. So I apologize, but I apologize, I can't give you an answer.
So could you, would you consider amending your motion that, David, in two weeks, could you consider at least being able to discuss what your workload looks like? Is that reasonable? It's a lot, his workload is...
Again, honestly, I, to be frank, I believe the question is well-intended, but it's not hitting the mark.
Okay.
I wrote, again, the staff report to indicate that there's many members of our department that would have to be involved with this. And so it's all of their workloads that would have to be brought to, to the fore in terms of how it would be placed in our priorities. So I'm just trying to highlight, that's not a simple ask.
Sure.
Well, and maybe, while you're there, so I, what I'm trying to do is find the balance between us living in the realities of a very understaffed department and a huge amount of road projects that are created by this latest fire, besides the ones that were there historically. I'm trying to balance all of that with the public basically being in a position of, they can't even tell me when I could expect somebody to show up. They can't, they say they might be able to, you know, harden our road, but I don't know when, I'm going to find out when that could even happen. And that's the part I'm trying to close the loop on, is we, you know, we can understand, because we, and you can really understand, we get a piece of it from working with you, everything that goes into making that decision, but the person that's just sitting there and unable to drive back and forth and concerned that the river's going to take out more by the time we get anything solved and all this stuff. I'm just trying to find that balance, so that's my intention. And if you can guide me towards the best way to address that intention, I'm happy to adjust my motion.
Again, apologies, I don't believe I can assist you in clarifying that. I would say that it's our intention as well, every one of us in this department, to pursue solutions as quickly as we can, to get products out, to, out the door as quickly as we can. Yet, there's so many contingencies that I don't believe it would be fair of me to actually try to give, try to make up an answer at the moment. And to, and with respect, even on May second, I believe is what you said, for that board meeting, it will be a bit of a lift to try to, for our entire department, to prioritize this project and have an outcome that is discernible. I'm not trying to dodge you, especially for the sake of communication with the public, yet at the moment, I can't do anything more.
And, and just to be clear, what you're saying is, it's, it's that huge lift just to be able to say, here's what you can and can't expect us to be able to, to do during this, during X timeframe.
I would have to confer with our road superintendent, our crews, all of our equipment, to know everything that would have to be in place in order to actually schedule something for a work window that is appropriate. And just to speak to that also, the actual design and what that design would be. And if it's temporary, how temporary? We don't, don't wish to put material down and then have it dissolved immediately. We would have to have some intentionality to it. And that I also can't speak to until our engineers are brought on board. Hydrologists, geomorphologists, potentially, so.
I'm sorry, I thought your question was, come back to the next board meeting to give you a list of our priorities, not when this road is going to be fixed.
What I started with was the list of priorities.
Yes.
And a sense of where this fits into it. And then I added, because we can't tell these folks when to expect anything to include when they could expect something. And I'm not trying to say, we'll fix the road by June second. I'm trying to say, we're not going to do anything by June second. We're not going to get to this until next year. We're not, just some clarity of expectation. Because I think the, the biggest problem we have is people sit not knowing anything, and that's worse than, than nothing.
Well, and I think some of it's going to be contingent upon what we decide, what we come up with too, in the legal opinions. And they're going to be hogtied a little bit to do anything over there until they hear from us, in some respect. Because they may or may not be able to take certain steps.
Okay.
Just based on our concerns with risk, insurance, gift of public funds, those issues. So they're, they're going to be somewhat hogtied until they, you know, we ferret all of that out too.
Okay, I'll pull back my amendment and, and just convey my strong desire that we find a way to communicate whatever we can to the people that are waiting for answers. I mean, we've heard that, not just about this road, but other roads, and that's, I know the problem is. Well, how do we answer their question about when, when we have twenty of these that are just as complicated, maybe not legally, but structurally, design-wise, everything else? So I get it, I'm just trying to address this concern and, and the importance of us having as much clarity of X and shared expectations as possible. So now I'm back to, just that the DOT, as you previously seconded, DOT would present a list of their current priorities at the next meeting.
So withdraw of your amended motions back with the initial. You accept that?
Yes. And I think if anything, before, before we vote, I think that it's been a really good conversation, I hope it has. I mean, I understand, I'm not the one that can't get to my house comfortably. And as much as we want to hand a, here is what it is and when it is, hopefully there has been some good clarity on both sides of the equation of the limitations of staff and what they can and cannot do in two, well, no, there was not. One person can only do so much in a day. And the list is longer than any of us even realize. And people equally important with equally weighted problems exist as well. And so I think, to me, to the end that I think you were trying to get is, continued communication will help.
Yes, thank you.
All right, you have something for there?
So yeah, we're going to have them go off and do a study on the priorities of, of the roads here. Obviously, these folks out there on Garrett Road, it's going to be forever before they, that road's fixed. I mean, it's just, I'll just tell you the way it is. You're going to be swimming before you're driving. And that's, that's what it's going to be. It's going to take a long time. We said, we're going to set up priorities, I'm sure. I live there, I want my priority to be high. The way it's going to come down with twenty-one million dollars' worth of stuff that we have to do as a county. You know, I feel for all, I feel for all of you guys. I just don't know what, sure, at some point, we have to do something that prioritizes what we do. That maybe this is a start. I don't see this being any kind of immediate or even semi-immediate help for the people on Garrett Road or the veterinary clinic out there. It does solve a little bit for us up here, what's a party, what's aren't. But for Garrett Road, I don't think it's going to really be an answer that you're looking for from the board at this time. Just wanted to let you know that.
In order to do that, but I'm, I'm going to help you. I'm going to reopen public comment. And I would like you to come to the podium, and I want to hear what you have to say.
I believe that the real crux of the matter for us was that...
I'm sorry, I need you to restate your name.
Don Flasher, Heimpong. The, we didn't want you to accept the abandonment of the road. It was vitally important, and I don't believe by, if you guys vote, you will do that. All you're doing is funding it. But the beginning of that part, that whole part of that summary, saying that it's not our road? Don't do that. Don't say it is or it isn't, because you don't know. That's what you have to study. Putting up money for it, whatever you need to do to study it, yes. But don't make a decision about if it is the county road or it isn't. It's too big of an issue.
Thank you. And public comment is open, so if anyone else would like to make comment at this time, you are welcome. And it's open on Zoom as well.
I have no raised hands, no.
All right, with that, we will close public comment, bring it back to the board. We have a motion in a second.
Let me hear motion.
Okay.
Chairman. Should we have him read it as it's stated, and we can get into the minutes?
Yes.
Via email? Okay.
I'm going to read it again. Uh, motion to approve the forty thousand and authority to use it as proposed, along with board direction as follows. County council to do further research to create a formal legal opinion regarding ownership of this road, including gathering of historical information that would help shape that opinion. County council to prepare a quote-unquote "least risky" approach to solving this problem, all to be provided by June twentieth. DOT to provide an updated view of project priorities at the next meeting. Or if you want to give me a specific date.
Panos needs to do the May second meeting? He'll be gone the next.
At the May second meeting, okay.
And I, I didn't catch the first motion that you made, that to use it as proposed, because the forty thousand dollars was proposed to be used to repair the road, and we don't, can't do that until we determine whether or not we own it. Am I misreading that?
Uh, well, I'm, however, you guys work behind the scenes of what you can legally do when, but, but we're...
It says to assist, I think it's, it's meaning...
It says to assist in repair.
Yes.
So that's my concern, we don't have, not legally free to do that yet, until I figure out if we...
It's my understanding that it's to assist in regards to...
Right, we don't have those findings yet.
Having a discussion, having the findings, and then possible a potential hardening, maybe, of the, of the road that has been set as a detour.
So you want to limit it just to the research?
And yet, David had said he's, it was his intention that some of that may be used for some hardening.
Please come forward if you have something to say.
To be honest, I'm not sure exactly where we're, where we are in this discussion, but I wanted to say that the way the staff report is intended is that, one, we can look into the potential for hardening and what that would mean for any budgetary considerations, equipment and otherwise schedules. But also to assist the pursuit of other grant funds. I am aware of several opportunities that could potentially be used for this site, and I want to continue those discussions with people in order to explore those options. And that's one where that would define the county role of assisting others in pursuing those, rather than the county taking the lead and actually applying for those. And so I want to clarify, we would not be the lead, we would assist.
Thank you for that clarity, I didn't really hear that before. Thank you.
For you real quick, sorry. Would this money be better well-spent looking for?
We don't have a second yet? Oh, okay, yes, we did.
Instead of building a list of priorities, would this money be better spent looking for grant opportunities or the things you just mentioned?
It's available for all of that, I think he's saying.
As, as it is worded, it's available for all of that. Again, what I'm loath to do is to create essentially a position in DOT that is searching for grant funding, that's its own sort of job classification that I don't wish to go down. I just want to add this language very generally defined to allow us to assist others. I hear what you're saying, but I, I believe that real role of pursuing grant funding is something that's much more appropriate to a different position.
Okay, do you have that captured?
Motion to authorize approximately forty thousand in general fund during fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three to use in researching short-term and long-term options, potential grant funding, et cetera, related to repair of damage to the privately-owned portion of Garrett Road, and authorize a CAO and auditor to sign the necessary budget adjustments to allocated contingency funds in the amount of twenty-five thousand to miscellaneous public works department three-one-one-zero, plus all of our directions.
The portion that says the privately-owned portion, that's what we're yet deciding, so if we could reword that.
Just.
Do the dam, repair damage to Garrett Road. Have to say it all again, or you got that?
Yeah, we got it.
All right, and I... All right. And I will send this.
Thank you. My second concurs. So we're good.
Okay.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Lutwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Um, I would like to make one more request of Supervisor Carpenter Harris. And I don't know if this would assist and this is at council's discretion. But when you go to look into the history, we've had certain pieces of history come forward today that may be helpful. As you opened up a specific email that cannabis folks could use to provide information or ask questions, could we have an email opened up that Supervisor Carpenter Harris would be able to check where historical data provided by folks who know could send that to her to be routed to you as useful? Is that a direction the board agrees with me on?
I agree, just.
Okay, there you go. Right. Like we need to take a breath.
Yeah.
It's 1:50. Um, let's take five minutes, please.
Thanks for keeping me out of the weeds.
Sorry, I was in the weeds. I was drowning in the weeds. How's that?
Read the stupid items. Okay.
Friday's canceled?
Friday's canceled.
Yeah, the pills hearing is canceled.
Only part of it. The rest, the rest of Friday's not canceled.
Yeah, I will be here on Friday.
I thought I was gonna get to actually like make a day up.
Right? Yeah, because I have economic development on Fridays too. So it's like my, it used to be my empty day and now it's my busy day.
Happens with empty days is they fill up.
Mm-hmm.
But it used to be Thursday. Thursday was my day.
Oh, yeah? Oh, right, yeah.
All right, it is 1:56 and we are back in open session. Transportation, item 4.5. Adopt a resolution which adopts the California Environmental Quality Act, determination of a mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Lorenz Road over Middle Weaver Creek Bridge Replacement Project, no fiscal impact. And David Kolbeck, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Supervisors. David Kolbeck, Department of Transportation. May I ask, would you like me to sit down lower or at the podium here? What is your preference?
Go ahead and sit down.
Would you like that?
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Supervisors. Um, I do not have any visuals with you, so no need for, for anything too complicated. But I do want to just walk through this very briefly. This is a bridge replacement project that is, uh, as stated, over Middle Weaver Creek on Lorenz Road in Weaverville. And I understand Middle Weaver Creek, we don't often refer to it as that, but it is Sydney Gulch is the other term for it, through the middle of downtown. Uh, this is, this bridge, this location, I should say, uh, is adjacent to Lee Fong Park, uh, the Weaverville Historic Downtown, which is a natural, National Register of Historic Places, the Jaws House, uh, and Jackson Memorial Museum. So it's located in a, in a very central location in downtown Weaverville. If you look at maps or page six, I believe you'll find a map of the location. There is also a standalone map that is part of the board packet that was provided to you and is available online for the public. Uh, this bridge is being replaced under the Federal Highway Bridge Program. Uh, it's administered by Caltrans on behalf of the Federal Highway Administration. Uh, Caltrans will be the responsible for oversight of the project and it will be locally administered by the County Department of Transportation and specifically our Associate Engineer Randy Cessna as our, uh, Specialist on Bridges. Um, the purpose of the project is to provide a safe crossing of Middle Weaver Creek or Sydney Gulch uh, for the public by replacing the existing structurally deficient bridge with a structure that meets current acceptable standards and constructing the necessary roadway approach improvements. So the action to be taken by the board today is to adopt by resolution, uh, mitigated negative declaration under SEQA as well as the MMRP, which is the Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Plan, as well as a location for where files were to be stored, all of which is required under SEQA statute, state law or Environmental Quality Act. Uh, that resolution is included in the board packet. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Questions of the board?
I just, I wanted to ask you, David, I saw that you had made a number of comments that the report indicated they responded to your comments. So you, you're comfortable with everything as presented to the things that you raised?
Uh, specifically, we opened this up under SEQA practice or policy, I suppose, for any commenters of trustee agencies, responsible agencies. So we post this, an initial study is essentially in the draft mitigated negative declaration for agencies to respond fish and wildlife. Uh, California Department of Fish and Wildlife was the only agency to provide comments. Those comments were reviewed and incorporated into the document to satisfy their requests.
Okay, gotcha.
Any other questions? All right, we will open this up for public comment. Any in the room? Any on Zoom? Veronica Kelly Albies?
Hi, Veronica Kelly Albies, Weaverville Douglas City Parks and Rec. And we, uh, I had the opportunity to review this document and speak with David Kolbeck regarding some, some items we would like to, um, request. As the owners and operators of Lee Fong Park, we have several events already scheduled there for, uh, this season and next season, weddings, musical events, birthday parties. And we, uh, we wanted to request that when this does go out to bid, that it included language for mitigation of noise levels, backup machi, you know, the backup beep beeps. Uh, we talked about something called a growler. Still don't find it on Google, David, but I'm looking. Um, but also for any generators, uh, we, we just want to continue. We've worked really hard to market Lee Fong Park and bring more, um, visitors to our area. And we just want to make sure that they enjoy that experience. And we do have different classes that are held in Lee Fong Park now during the summer. So, um, we wanted to ask that you include that. And I had a couple of other things and of course I jumped on a, on a phone call. Um, but I did speak with David about some of the, the concerns that we had. Um, noise was being, uh, was a big one. Um, the creek diversion we talked about as well. But just to keep in mind and make, and have conversations with our, uh, special district as you are developing that, uh, request for proposal, our quote, to go out to the general contractors to make sure that we're all working well together. Um, it's right up, but I'm so excited to see this project come to be. It's been talked about for many, many, many years. So congratulations on working towards this goal. Um, we would like to be a partner in this process. So we just asked for some consideration in those areas and thank you very much.
Thank you. I have no other raised hands and no chimes. All right. With that, we will close public comment, bring it back to the board, entertain a motion.
If I may interject, please, as part of the SEQA process, we are required to respond to any comments that are provided during the public hearing. Uh, while I mentioned the written comment period, a 30-day period for anyone to respond, this meeting at the moment is also considered an opportunity for the public to engage. And so I need to respond to those comments provided.
Absolutely. I didn't realize it was a public hearing.
Yeah. So I did speak with the commenter. Um, and I do understand that noise is a concern, specifically construction noise and equipment noise. I will say that those, uh, issues were addressed in the mitigated negative declaration under several sections, which include public services, recreation, transportation and traffic, as well as hazards and hazardous materials, all of which, uh, were determined to reach a level of less than significance based on the decibel levels of the construction activity itself, as well as, uh, the distance to any sensitive receptors or special uses, including the park, that would allow for the attenuation of any decibel levels to be far below those that are mandated by the, um, general plan, for example. Uh, from 86 decibels down to below 68 and based off of some rudimentary calculations on my part, uh, down to even, uh, 40 decibels that could be, uh, felt or heard, I should say, at the park itself. That being said, uh, there is a conservation measure section, conservation measure number nine, which does allow for the addition of additional protections should noise become a problem during construction. And so that's fairly vague, but does allow quite a bit of other opportunities for us to mitigate noise. Um, and that could include the installation of a different type of backup warning system on equipment that is used. I suggest to the board as staff to, I recommend that as it stands, the, the project has been analyzed sufficiently. The conservation and mitigation measures are appropriate to reduce any environmental impact to less than significant. Uh, that we could, uh, based on our own uh, uh, contracting practices, I want to say, add special provisions that would include other additional mitigations, but that is the role of the DOT. So my recommendation is that this be accepted as written.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move that we accept as presented.
I will second.
Hey, motion by Supervisor Lutwiler, second by Supervisor Gogan. Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Lutwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Thank you. Item 4.6, adopt a resolution which approves Department of Transportation to plow the driveways of Trinity County Volunteer Fire Departments, no fiscal impact. Uh, who do I turn this over to? Supervisor Lutwiler? Is it your item?
That's not under BOS. It's under transportation.
I think it's, it's a many part, many people have helped.
Turn it to the CAO.
Well, take it. I see the date slips me. Um, Director Kokas, myself and County Council have been working together to bring options. Um, one item presented was the possibility of an MOU and that would not work very well for Department of Transportation, but a resolution would, which is attached and, uh, for your review. There's not really creative authority to change the language in this resolution. Um, and it will require a fourth, fifth vote to receive. Um, we feel like this is the best option for all parties involved. Um, I did send a copy of this to, uh, the fire chief to forward to the fire council at large. And, um, there was, Rick, do you have that comment? There was one comment provided.
Oh, um.
My apologies.
Yep. I filed it already.
You too.
My snow matters file. The only comment or questions I received back from any of the fire departments is clarification on what the legal right of way for the county means. Other than that, no one emailed back further, any further besides support to pass the resolution. That was from Chief Corbett.
So I would defer to County Council on the legal, what the legal right of way for the county means.
So the, um, this would just, I think you were just talking about doing that, the driveways.
Correct.
Correct. So that would be the legal right of way. And that's what the reservation states it would be. So the legal right of way would just be the scope of the actual, um, driveway itself to access that to plow away.
I have a question for council. When I pulled up 969.5, it follows 96, followed by 969.6. And it almost seems, did we consider, uh, this other avenue? It almost seems like it fits better. It says notwithstanding section 969.5 or any other provision of this code, if a state of local emergency is declared, and I don't know if you consider a significant snowstorm a state of local emergency. Maybe that's a hangup.
It would depend. It would have to be declared.
Okay. Um, is declared by the board of supervisors as a result of, and it does say, just. Is declared by the board supervisors as a result of, and it does say just locally heavy rainfall or flood. And so is that not specific enough to snow, or does it include water in all of its forms?
It would depend on what kind of damage you're talking about. I mean, because the state of emergency isn't going to be sufficient every single time you have a large rainstorm.
I see. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, it just seemed like it was a simple route. The board may authorize the expenditure of road funds for the purpose of an emergency repair. But it seems that doesn't fit.
You'd have to be able to justify the designation of a state of emergency.
Got it. Yeah. All right, thank you for that. No further comment. Okay.
All right, um, really quickly, before we go too far into this, uh, C A O Hamilton did bring it to my attention earlier that someone had wished wished that I recuse myself from this item because I'm a member of Volunteer Fire Department. I will not be doing so because the Volunteer Fire Department I'm a member of has its own snowplows and takes responsibility for clearing its own driveways, so this doesn't affect me in the least.
Good, thank you for that.
The same concern was raised for me, and while Lewiston also has its own equipment, I think the fact that I've been pushing this for months probably would give reason for me to recuse myself, just in case there was any concern that I have a conflict of interest, so I will recuse myself.
Okay. All right, with that, are there any further questions before I open public comment?
Yeah, I guess, well, discussion.
Not yet, just questions. Okay, we will open public comment on this item. Any public comment in the room? Seeing none, is there any on Zoom?
I have no raised hands, no chimes.
All right, that we will close public comment, bring it back to the board.
So my discussion would be that, damn it, I didn't know damn it was on a Volunteer Fire Department, but you guys have a snowplow. Sorry, you guys have a snowplow, and so does Rick and Lewiston. Well, I think before we get too far into discussion, you should make a motion. Are we in discussion or motion?
Well, if you have a question.
Can't discuss until you make a motion.
Going to go deep in without a motion on the table.
Oh, I'll make it easy. I'll make a motion to adopt item 4.6 as presented. If someone would care to second it, then we can have some discussion. I'll second for discussion. All right, now.
Thank you.
How about it?
You're good.
All right, so I, two of the people on our board here work for Volunteer or Volunteer for Volunteer Fire Department, and they both have snowplows. Why do the ones in question here not, and they seem to be in the places that you would probably want a snowplow the most? Why did they not have one after all these these years? It would seem to be. There's a lot of factors that go into that, like where do you put it? How do you afford it? Do you have someone to drive it? Actually, Southern Trinity has one snowplow that used to belong to Trinity County and was, I think, basically donated to the ambulance service who had nobody to drive it, so it was parked forever. So they donated to the fire department with the understanding that we would also clear the ambulance yard.
Sure.
So there's there's a lot that goes into having a snowplow. It's not, it's not the number one priority for Volunteer Fire Department to finance a snowplow when most of the Volunteer Fire Departments don't have equipment for fighting fires that is serviceable. All right, then I, I just wanted to question to the language in here. Now therefore be resolved, the fourth line down says county interest demand removal. How is that perceived? Does that mean I have to take a driver from A and bring him to B because it's now a demand? Or if they're in the vicinity, they should do it? How do I perceive and what I take from that?
This is language that's taken directly from the statute that's required to be in it, and that's basically saying that it's not that the you're demanding the county to do, and they're saying in the county's interests. It's it's the county's interest demands that the snow be removed so emergency services can be provided. It's not as specific, um, you're demanded to go here at this particular time or place. It's just that the county's interest is so profound that it really demands that they do something to remove this now. So it's just statutory language.
True. Questions I have.
All right. All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Frazier and a second by Supervisor Gogan.
Supervisor Gogan?
No.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
That actually fails because it's required a fourth, fifth vote.
Right, with that, we'll move into closed session. Item 5.1, Government Code Section 54954.5E, Public Employee Evaluation, County Council. Is there any public comment on closed session?
I have no raised hands, no chimes.
All right, with that, we will adjourn our open session portion of this meeting.